Welcome. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council meeting, regular meeting Tuesday, August 27, 2019. It is 5:30 PM. We do have a quorum of council members here. We are at the Veterans Hall, 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. With that, I'd like to call for a moment of silence, please. And Councilmember Heller, if you'll lead us in the pledge, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report this evening?
No reportable action, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, I'll look to our council members for council member reports announcements. Starting to my right, Councilmember Heller, anything? Nothing? Councilmember McPherson?
No, I have nothing to report.
All right. Councilmember Davis, sir.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm going to put on my radio hat for a minute and talk about our local FM community radio station, 97.3 The Rock. It is actually 97.3 and 107.9 The Rock, KEBF Morro Bay and KZSR Paso Robles because we broadcast to the North County as well as to the Central Coast. 97.3 is totally community-owned and supported. All of the costs associated with the station are paid for by listener underwriting and annual fundraisers. It does not cost the city any money at all. We are an all-volunteer station, and when you tune into The Rock, you hear your friends and neighbors talking about local events. Chamber functions, food and wine, recreation services, health tips, how to train your dog, cannabis information, traffic, weather, council meetings, and music. Whatever your music taste is, somebody is playing it on 97.3. And I want to put in a special plug for tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 PM to hear Sandra Sudonim of Planet San talk with Councilmember Addis about an upcoming panel discussion called Run, Win, Make a Difference. And the panel is made up of elected representatives from Paso Robles, San Luis Obispo, Grover Beach, and Atascadero. And Dawn is going to moderate a discussion about running for office and making a difference in your community. Actually, I believe that Sandra Sudonim is not her real name. So, The Rock also delivers emergency broadcast alerts and weather alerts, Amber alerts, and Slow County Emergency Services messages. So, 97.3 The Rock is a platform for every nonprofit agency in our community, from Rotary to Morro Bay Friends of the Library to the Senior Center. We are a voice for everyone, so take a listen and see what you think. And if you want to be on the radio, contact Hal Abrams at AsteroCommunityRadio.com.
Great. You rock.
One more thing. I will have office hours this coming Saturday at Sun 'n' Buns from 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock. So, anybody who wants to talk to me about anything, come on by.
Councilmember Addis.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody that came out and talked with Red and I, the Morro Bay Active Adults at the Senior Center last Friday. We had very lively discussions, I think, on pickleball and bocce ball and all kinds of things that are important in the active adult community. And we did hear that the bocce ball courts should be ready sometime in October. So, that was exciting news. And I am done with afternoons with Addis for summertime. Summer's almost over, but I'm still out in the community. So, I'll be on the radio tomorrow. As Councilmember Davis said, I'll be at Run, Win, Make a Difference, and I hope all of you will come. It's in San Luis Obispo on Thursday at 5:30 at the United Church of Christ. And we have newly elected council members from across Slow County that'll be moderating a panel. For those of you that either want to run for office or get involved in a campaign as the 2020 elections come, we hope to see you there. And then I will be going to Catch of the Central Coast in Avila on September 14. And that's a fundraiser for the Central Coast Aquarium. And if you'd like to go, you can get tickets at CentralCoastAquarium.com. And then on September 21, I'll be with Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. They're going to have an event from 2:30 till 6:00. So, I hope to see folks out there supporting Morro Bay Open Space Alliance.
Great. Thank you. Great events. And I wanted to recognize one of our esteemed staff members. We received a letter from the Government Finance Officers Association, and it was to our city manager, Mr. Collins. I want to read it to you. It says, "We are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report," that's the large annual report done by the Finance Department, also known as the CAFR for the fiscal year ended 2018, "qualifies for GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. When a certificate of achievement is awarded to a government, an award of financial reporting achievement is also presented to the individual or department designated by the government as primarily responsible for having earned the certificate." This award had been sent to the city, and Ms. Callaway is our designated recipient of that. And it ends by saying, "We hope that you will arrange for a formal presentation," which I'm doing right now, "in this recognition of the individuals involved." This is, I believe, now year number two, if I'm correct, Mr. Collins, that we have received this award?
First year. We won the award for budget last year.
For budget last year. First year for this award. This is significant for the City of Morro Bay. It attests to the financial integrity and the standard operating procedures employed by the department. And I would like you to give it up for Ms. Callaway and her staff. Jen, congratulations, and please extend congratulations of all council members in the community to your staff as well for this great recognition. We appreciate all of the work that you do, as well as Mr. Collins, in actually winning this award. So, great notification and great recognition that... Anything you want to add, Mr. Collins, to that?
Just want to say thanks to the council, the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee, and the previous finance directors and staff who really kind of set the stage for us stepping in, and Jen and her team really leading the way, once they kind of did the trailblazing.
Yeah. Great job. And Chief Knuckles, I believe you have an exciting announcement on your app. Did you want to give that announcement this evening? Did I surprise you?
Good, if I did.
No, I was hoping you'd ask about it.
Good. Yeah.
So, we are very fortunate to have a new app that's called Pulse Point, is given us free by our county dispatch, our regional dispatch system. And it's an app on your phone. It's very simple to operate and actually put on your phone. It does three things. One, it notifies you if there is a 911 call-in of an active CPR that's occurring within so many yards from your phone. And that can be anywhere in the state of California that supports a Pulse... correction, a Pulse Point app. The second thing that does have in our town, too, is that there is a portion of it, you sign up for San Luis Obispo County, and it will list every call we go on in the county because we're a part of the county dispatch system. But also has a little speaker on top also, and you can push on that speaker, and you'll can hear the dispatch over your phone, just like we hear on the radio. But the third thing, which is very nice, that this is another form of notification that we can use to notify our public that there's an issue going on, such as evacuations or a possible significant event in our community. This is all free to us, and the more people we get on it, the safer community we are. And hopefully that we can have some citizens help us with bystander CPR when it does occur. I saw a stat today, you have a 71% chance of increase in living if you have bystander CPR done before arrival. So, this is an app that can save lives, keep us notified, and also allow us to notify the public during significant events.
Great. Thank you for that. And then you want to tell us about the push-in celebration? I found out the significance of the term "push-in," but maybe you can enlighten us.
It is a fire department tradition, and when we get a new fire apparatus, especially one that's been purchased by the community like this engine has been, with the Bertha Schultz Trust and Measure Q funding, is it's an old tradition from the 1800s. Back in the 1800s, we'd have the old steamer, horse-drawn fire engines, that the horses couldn't back in the engine back from a fire. So, they actually had to bring community members to the firehouse, take multiple of them, and push it back into the engine bay. We're going to be transferring water from old 5391 to new 5391. New engine 5391 will be going into service that day. And this is an opportunity to thank the public for both Bertha Schultz, for her contributions towards the engine, also thank the public for voting yes on Measure Q many years ago that's helping us fund this apparatus.
And the date and time?
Thank you. That will be next Tuesday on the 3rd at 9:00 in the morning at our Harbor Street Fire Station.
Great time for a celebration, and great story on the push-in story. I just learned that from Councilmember Davis, what that meant. So, he preempted you. Thank you for those announcements. Mr. Collins, sir, for you.
No further ado?
Yeah. Okay. Nothing else to say. With that, I'll move to our business spot for the evening. Tonight, we're lucky enough to have Dave Schultz from the Bike Shop. Dave, come on up and tell us about your move and what's going on at the Bike Shop. Welcome.
All right. Well, thanks for having me. My name's Dave Schultz, and I own the Bike Shop. I've just moved from downtown to North Morro Bay. I'm up at the far end of town at 3118 Main Street in Manfredo Square, next to the Three Stacks and a Rock Brewery. We've got plenty of parking there. I'm still doing all the same stuff I was doing before as far as repairing everyone's bikes or repairing all types of bikes. I'm still selling all the parts and accessories, and I'm super excited about e-bikes myself. So, I'm pretty much just selling new Bosch and Shimano e-bikes at the new location. So, that's good. We've got plenty of parking up there, e-bikes to try, still fixing everything. Just in a new location, so everything's going good. And yeah, just hope to see everyone up there anytime anyone needs anything bicycling-related.
And what are your hours, Dave?
My hours are still the same, 10 till 5:30 Tuesday to Saturday, and then I'm closed on Sunday and Monday. And yeah, I'm just selling the e-bikes, but hopefully I can do... I've got a computer set up in there for anyone still wanting regular bikes that I can order, get the next few days. So, I'm trying to do some consulting stuff like that, still renting the regular bikes, heavy bike demo bikes, and yeah, kind of business as usual for the most part.
Great. And for people that don't know, the e-bikes are electric bikes, right?
Yeah, the electric bikes. I'm selling the nice Bosch and Shimano branded pedal-assist bikes, so they ride just like a regular bike. Maintenance is like a regular bike. You're just getting three levels of assist for going up hills into the wind. Hopefully, the mayor's been enjoying his new e-bike. Yeah, they're super fun. I'm really excited about them myself, so I figured I might as well just start only selling those at this point and taking it from there.
Great. Thanks, Dave.
All right. Thank you.
Glad to have you up here. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay. With that, we do have...
The chamber presentation.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I was going to say next, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins. I appreciate that. And now turn the... over the agenda to Mr. Collins. Presentations tonight, I do have next up Ms. Erica Crawford. Good to see you, Chamber CEO and President. Welcome this evening for your quarterly report.
Thank you. Oh, here comes Bob from AGP. Try not to talk 1,000 miles per hour today. All right. Thanks so much, Erica Crawford from the Chamber. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff, for having us back for our quarterly presentation. We'll dive right in. Our Chamber is a three Cs Chamber. That's a Western Association of Chamber Executives kind of missive, so we are catalyst for business growth in the community. We're a champion for a strong community, and we're a convener of leaders and influencers. Some of that convening comes from our Board of Directors. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(6) independent organization, independent from any kind of government. It is our season for board elections. So, right around September, we send our slate out, our memberships... members vote for their selections. Right now, we have a nominating committee. There are the individuals in the orange boxes. So, Richie at Jim's Auto, Jane Engel Allen with Engel and Associates Insurance, and Stephen Peck, Peck Planning and Development are our nominating committee if there are members who are interested in stepping into a three-year leadership position with the Chamber. It's a commitment, but I promise it's fun. So, please get in touch, or you can get in touch with me, and I'll put you in touch with them. A lot of what the Chamber Board does is really set the strategic vision and kind of the path that our staff walks down. And some of that has been really taking a more active role in advocacy. So, the Chamber has established a pathway to taking policy positions. The positions are taken by the Board of Directors themselves. They are often advised by our newly formed, or actually, I guess it's almost a year now, our Governmental Affairs Committee. And at times, the Chamber will simply provide feedback and share research without taking a formal policy position. Some of our recent efforts in the advocacy realm include harbor and waterfront issues, the issue of local hire, cost of services study, and the fee study that's ongoing, the revenue enhancement measures, some of which are on the agenda this evening, offshore wind development. I was at a roundtable with our Congressman Carbahal yesterday, kind of asking for an update on DOD with that project off of our coast, the Morro Bay Call area, and the general plan and local coastal program update, something that we're very tuned into. And a lot of the reason we're tuned into that is related to our economic development efforts. This is a... I'm going to take a minute on this slide. It's a lot of text. Just giving you an update, we are... I am currently meeting weekly with our city manager, Mr. Collins. I think we're on a monthly-ish schedule, meeting with the mayor heading, and monthly for sure with our chamber committees, the Government Affairs, the Executive Committee, our Board of Directors are all very much involved in this scope of work. I have brought on an intern. His name is Lauren French. He's currently helping me develop an economic snapshot of the city. We have this data, TOT, sales tax, quantity and valuation of building and planning permits available, but not really in one place. So, I'm using this as sort of a base to start the effort of the economic development microsite. We are planning a fall workshop on business improvement districts with the Downtown Slow Association. SCORE and the Women's Business Center are still bringing their monthly workshops. The next one is on buying and selling a business, and I have a slide about that later. Our relocation guide, we're laying the groundwork. I'm hopeful, fingers crossed, that we'll be able to work with some Cal Poly journalism students to do some of the content creation for that, sort of a profile in our community. We are starting developer roundtables, kind of dipped our toes into that work through the local hire issue and our research with that, but I think that will grow as we go. There is a lot of activity. Most of my efforts right now are around permit process review, tracking projects that are in the pipeline, and understanding sort of statutory guidelines and the way that regulated the different regulators kind of operate with one another. I have done some direct work in the last couple of months with 12 businesses on relocation, expansion, new development, even a new concert series opportunity for other community. I got Morro Bay, or we... our efforts got Morro Bay on the front page. I hope everybody's read the Pacific Coast Business Times $100 million makeover article. Thank you for members of the community who participated in that. I am still involved with the Hourglass Project and Deloitte Consulting. Their effort is to develop a vision and an action plan that's focused on creating jobs and sharing prosperity regionally. Some of you were at the kind of the local or the subregional lab in San Luis Obispo a few weeks ago, and then they're having a sort of an invite-only 23-people lab in Santa Barbara on Thursday, so I'll be at that. And wayfinding signage. We're still there. We're so close. We're refining the content and the placement with community development and tourism, but they look great, and they'll look even better when they're up. An update from our visitor center. This is January to July. About 2,000 people through our front door, 3,000 total inquiries, and 1,000 phone calls. This is a call to remind businesses that you don't have to be a Chamber member to have your materials in our visitor center. We want you to have your cards or your business cards, or just come by and give us a little handshake and tell us about you so that you're fresh on our minds. About 20% of all of our inquiries in this time period were about events. And this is Max. I wanted you to meet Max Morrison. He sort of helped us pilot, you know, as we move into this new year, we are trying to get our visitors' experience liaison out there. So, he's a great, great kid, Morro Bay High School football, very driven, and was out there for a few weeks distributing materials like our public restrooms and public parking locations, the permit, thanks to Kirk Carmichael at REC for sort of a printout of upcoming events for the community, so that we can distribute that to businesses so that they know what's going on and what's coming up, and our trolley map and schedule. This is our next workshop. Kind of put this on the side, it seems so planning for succession, really what we're talking about and talking to, anyone who's thought about ever buying a business, selling their business, or just wondered how much their business is worth, should attend to this event. Anybody who said I'd sell if I got the right price, I hear that sometimes. Some of our consultants or the speakers that are being brought to our community are vetted, and they're vetted by the organizations that we're working with. They're not there to recruit business for themselves. They're there to impart education and answer questions. But I do just want to say out loud that the Chamber does not endorse the businesses that are owned by any of these speakers. That was a misconception I wanted to clear up. We're doing a September mixer, a co-mixer with the Lososos Chamber. We like to go and hang out with our partners across the bay at least once a year, so that'll be happening just a few days after the avocado festival, so we should be chipper after that. And that segues into our avocado margarita festival. At this moment in time annually, I'm going, why? What are we doing? So much time. It's such a monster, but it really does provide so much community benefit. So, we kind of went through the numbers for the last five years. Direct grants and funding to local youth and high school programs, this is all just as a result of the festival, over $33,000 over the last five years. And then the same grants and funding to local services, clubs, and organizations, $24,000. We're able, with our economic sapshot, to kind of have all this data at our fingertips. So, we've estimated that the increase in hotel revenue above average for that September weekend over the last five years has been almost $200,000. The investment multiplier effect, we took our investment in producing the event to a factor of two and added the revenue to that, is over $2 million for the last five years. And the direct revenue to the city is just TOT and T-Bid with the bookings above average for September is about $24,000 just direct. We still get flack on it being a margarita festival. It is an avocado festival. There is so much avocado food at this festival. This is our menu. You can get grilled avocados, fried avocados, smoked avocados, stuffed avocados, avocado delight. You can get whole avocados. There are growers there just selling their avocados. We really would love for you to come, but avocados need a friend. That friend is a margarita. We also have some kombucha. We have an actual avocado margarita this year with a hibiscus salt ramen. It's delicious. Every individual who enters the gate for the festival will receive a menu, and on the backside will be a map. And I just wanted to call out that we do have a survey. It's a post-event survey. This helps us understand who's coming, where they're coming from, how many people they come with, where they stay, if they stay overnight, how much they spend outside of the festival, whether they shop and stay and play on Friday and Sunday or just on Saturday. This is our schedule. Just as a reminder, it's September the 7th. Tickets right now are $7. There'll be $10 at the gate. We have, you know, Bring the Grommets. We have a whole area for the kids. It's all programmed. Morro Bay High School Art is doing this really cute kind of art creative section. We've got music. The Musical Petting Zoo will be there. And of course, the annual avocados for a year raffle. That'll be drawn at 6:00 PM. And some quick facts, we distribute this out to every business that's on the festival perimeter. We'll be delivering this this week. Actually, my board directors will be going peer-to-peer, door-to-door. We deliver this. We deliver some tickets for the event. We deliver some trolley passes so that employees can park and ride. And we also deliver some street closure information and quick facts. But I think this is helpful to understand the mammoth event that this is. It's 2,500 feet of ABC compliant fencing. We've had multiple pre-event city meetings. We have seven beneficiary groups this year, so we're really excited, I promise. No, I'm very, very excited. I think this is going to be like the banner year, so if you guys have any questions, I'm here for you. Thanks for letting me come and speak.
Any questions?
And I didn't even talk.
Boy, I tell you, you're right on time, too. Any questions for Erica? No, from council? Great. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to your festivals. Yeah, you can wave. Okay, great. Thank you. With that, I will open up general public comment. This is for anybody who would like to comment on items that you can't stay for, that are on the agenda, or items not on the agenda. I do have a number of folks that I'll call first that have signed up, and then I'll open it up for anybody else that may not have signed up that still wants to speak. So, with that, I have Dr. Bob Swain. Bob, welcome.
I'm waiting for it to do the three minutes. There you go. Mayor, city council, staff, members of the audience that was at home, I'm here to let you know the end is near. And the end is near because I'm a member of the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, and we have a World War II crash vehicle, recovery vehicle down there. It's only going to be there a few more weeks, so if you haven't been down there, you need to come down and get a tour. It's a fantastic boat. It's amazing. From the outside, it doesn't look like a whole lot, but there's all kinds of stuff underneath. It's like a triloba house under there. And so, I want to invite everybody down there to check it out. I mean, it's a fundraiser for the Morro Bay Museum, and we are a nonprofit, so everything's through donations and fundraisers. So, this is a fundraiser for the museum, and I'd like to invite everybody down there. And, well, I've got all kinds of time to talk. So, I thought I'd throw out there, I also don't have time to talk, but I'm going to speak about the vacation rentals that we're going to bring up later on. I think they need to be on a general playing field where everybody else. You know, I like to play basketball, and if we was on a team that said you can have seven feeders, seven footers, and the other team can only have five footers, that's not a level playing field, and the game won't be very good. And the same thing with the rental situation. You know, if the hotel's got to pay all these fees, and nobody else has to pay the fees, it's a shaft kind of to the hotels. They need to be on the same playing field to make it equal so that everybody plays the same game. I think that's a fair way to go. And I want to comment back on the Pulse app. It also has a metrodome on it that clicks at 100 beats per minute. So, when you're doing it, you hit that click, you know you're doing it right. And so, it's a fantastic pulse test. So, that's all I have to say, and I hope we see everybody down at the boat. It's a fantastic option to help raise money for the Maritime Museum, and it's a great thing to see. And it's the only boat of its kind. It's backed to World War II-era equipment, more or less, inside it. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it. Next up for general public comment is Larry Guesno, and I apologize if I said that incorrectly, but Larry, welcome.
Thank you for the time. I'm the owner of the Morro Strand RV Park, and my comment has to do with the T-Bid assessment. I've owned the park since 2016, and we provide very good service for our customers, and we direct them to other places. All the things that they cannot find in Morro Bay, we tell them where to go. And so, we're a very... all the RV parks are very good resource for all the other businesses in Morro Bay because people come in, they don't know where to find things. However, the T-Bid assessment is charging us for advertisement, and our park has a year-and-a-half waiting period. We do not need any advertisement. People... it's my experience from talking to people, they come to Morro Bay because it's hot in the valley and because it's like a little fishing town on the East Coast. That's what it reminds them of. And so, they love the harbor, and it's kind of a fantasy that you're living in. And so they love the harbor, and it's kind of a fantasy that you're living in on the East Coast when you come visit Morro Bay. But we've really gotten no benefit from this T-Bid assessment. And then, since I have a little more time, I just got turned down again on my plan for opening flipos. We're going to make it a coffeehouse, and now, we were going to have it a car club-type thing, because I thought there are a lot of old cars in the community, and it would be a great gathering area, but the expense of what we had to do for the building department was too high, so we switched it to a coffeehouse with arcades and batting cages. So there are no batting cages unless you go to Santa Maria, and there is nothing really reminiscent of a real batting cage up in North County at all. So this will be a big draw for every baseball player around. And I play, I'm the oldest guy in the league, I play in the adult men's baseball league, we play at Sinsheimer all the time, and they're always looking for a place. And so this will draw a whole lot of people also, you know, sports people are crazy, they, you know, they really will come if there is something off that's good for them. So that's what we're trying to put in there, and I think it'd be really good for the community also, which was, helped the high school have better teams, and the, you know, the kids' leagues and stuff, we're right by the park and the...
Thank you, Larry, appreciate it.
So anyway, okay, we hope we get it going.
Thank you so much. Next up for public comment, Janice Peters. Janice, welcome.
Thank you. I am here with my theater hat on this evening. By the Sea Productions is in the last part of our third year of operation. We are a nonprofit live theater company right here in Morro Bay, and our next show is opening a week from Friday, it's called Veronica's Position. It's about an actress and her ex-husband actor staging a reunion performance, which is complicated by the fact that she just got engaged to a senator. So there's this little triangle going on and some side things, it's very funny, very amusing, does have some adult language and situations, so probably not for kids, but a lot of fun, and hope you all come. I, part of our publicity, we always ask our audiences how they hear about us, and obviously we do print ads and things like that, Facebook, internet. And we also take out flyers, you each have one of our little handouts up there. And I just want to say thank you to the merchants and businesses in this community for letting us post our flyers, because it's amazing how many people from out of the city who come to see our shows because they saw a flyer in the window at the restaurant where they had dinner. So we have a rec card holder in all the hotels now, and that's really appreciated, that we can use those free publicity options for us, that we don't have to pay for a print ad to put a rec card in the hotel. It really helps us a lot. I think it helps the hotels too, to be able to say, oh, here's something to do, if you've seen the movie of the bay on Friday night, you can go to a play on Saturday night. So, and we are getting a lot of return customers, which is exciting. We also ask how many people are at each show from out of the county, and we average between five and eight people per show from out of the county. Each of our shows runs for a month, which means we've got 60 to 75 people coming from out of the county to see our performances, which is exciting too. We're having a lot of fun with it and enjoying it quite a bit. Oh yeah, there's the flyer for our coming show. And we are a nonprofit donation-supported facility, so we're always happy to have donation support. And some of our businesses also have been wonderful about that. Coalesce, I've got to specify them, because they've been supporting us monthly since we began, and that's wonderful. And we also get a lot of individuals who are donating. It all helps, because it's expensive to run a production company, you've got to pay royalties and costumes and props and all those sorts of things, so we really appreciate it. We also have lots of volunteer opportunities, you don't have to be up on stage, although, as Scott knows, that's exciting, he did a show at the Rotary with us just recently. But we have lots of volunteer opportunities, building sets and gathering costumes and props, so if you're interested, buitheseepproductions.org on the internet, and we look forward to seeing you at a show.
Thank you, Janice, appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Dave Nelson. Dave, welcome.
Good evening, David Nelson, I'm here for a couple of things. You know, there's been a lot of talk around here about making the stacks sacred, and I'm here to say again that those stacks are one of the most polluted areas in our county, and they have to be taken out of here. It's not buried, it's standing up straight, and don't make them monuments, they're pollution at a high level. Also, I have some questions. I hope everybody saw this article that Neil Farrell wrote in the Estero Bay paper, it shows what our neighbors in Cayucus are doing for their sewer, exactly what we should have been doing with our sewer. But instead, we were paying more to haul our crap from the high school to Tri-W property than they're paying for their whole sewer system. I find this really outrageous. You guys are putting this sewer plant right at the mouth of the harbor, the bay, our estuary. What is wrong with you people? I don't understand. We spent millions of dollars on environmental studies in the Morro Valley, where it would cost us a fraction of what it's costing us to do this grand act of buffoonery. And we've been, you know, you've got people believing things that just aren't real. And right here in this article, there's one that is near and dear to my heart, because I called it in the question before. How do you tell us that our sewer bills are going to be the same as Cayucus? This is $98 a month when this plant is finished. They've been working on this for a year, they've spent less than we have, and just can't even imagine what we're doing. This is crazy, it's crazy. And right here, I'm not saying this, they're saying it, you know, they're telling you that it's $98 a month, you're telling people in our community that our sewer is going to be the same as Morro Bay. That's just one misinformation. You're telling people that we're going to get 80% of our water from this sewer plant. I want to see, I want to see the cost of that water, I want to see how that plant's going to run, and what you're telling us. I want it backed up. You're telling us stuff that turns out not to be real. Is this a lie? I mean, are you people lying? I mean, the council presented to the Coastal Commission that this was a fact, that our sewer bill's going to be the same as Cayucus. Now, is this a lie or just misunderstanding? To me, it's been said and it's been challenged, I've challenged it when it was brought up the first time here, because I have friends in Cayucus, and they told me that this was the number. I called up in Cayucus, and the CSD told me this is the number. And after that, council presents to the Coastal Commission that we're going to have the same price as Cayucus, and it's lies.
Thank you, Dave, appreciate it. And next up for public comment is Linda Winters. Effectually known as Morro Bay Mobile Home, Linda. Hi, Linda.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Linda Winters, AKA Mobile Home Park Linda. My subject tonight is the Rent Stabilization Ordinance, AKA Rent Control for 1,000 Residents in 15 Mobile Home Parks here in Morro Bay. Recently, it came to our attention, in our mobile home park, that many of the city leaders were not particularly familiar with all of the facets of the city's rent stabilization ordinance, number 499. That ordinance was drafted and adopted in 1986, revised in 2003, '04 as ordinance number 499. So why do we, in mobile home park residents, need this ordinance in our 15 mobile home parks for our 1,000 residents? We have a very unique situation. We own our homes that are in these mobile home parks, the mobile homes, the park models, the RVs with add-on rooms, and we rent the spaces that those homes are located. We are homeowners and renters all at the same time. For 30 to 40, 25 to 30 years, it was a good solution to affordable housing for those that wanted to invest in Morro Bay. Everyone in the 1,000-plus residents were given the guarantee that their rents would not rise any higher than the percentage allowed for the ordinance yearly. The park owners abided by those numbers to protect the most vulnerable residents here in our town. The lower-income senior citizens retired, or disabled folks on fixed incomes, also families earning minimum wage, working two and three jobs to survive. These are your neighbors, the restaurant and motel workers, the supermarket and store employees, house cleaners, families with kids in Morro Bay High Schools, low-income people, not low-class people. Here's what I ask all of you to do before the next meeting on September 10th, read the ordinance in full. It can be found at the city website that's listed right up over there on the overhead, and I would ask all of you to help to understand what this ordinance actually consists of, so that you can better understand we, the mobile home residents, here in Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, appreciate that. Next up for general public comment is, oh, Carolyn, hold on, I think you have A3, right? I'll call those in just a second. Public comment is still open for items either on the agenda that you can't stay for, or general public comment, anybody else wishing to come on up? Hi, Betty.
Good evening, my name is Betty Winholz. I want to talk about Lila Kaiser Park, a city park. There used to be two rows of sienothus trees that were brought some nature, some color to the park, and of recent, they've been cut and taken out, and concrete stone blocks have been placed in place of them, and I'd like to know what the intent is for this parking lot, for upgrading the area, and why it's been made to look more ugly instead of more beautiful? Because our parks are one of the quality of life issues that we all expect in Morro Bay. We have very beautiful parks here, and yet this one seems to be making a turn for the worse. And so I'd like to know what the plan is for that. I would also point out that the eucalyptus trees on the backside of the baseball diamonds close to Highway 1, there's a couple of them that have been dying for the last couple of years, they're close to our wells. I don't know if it's related to the wells, or what that's about, but does anyone know what's going on with those trees? And then my last, that's the one topic, my second topic is, I would like to ask if the addendum to the FEIR could be put on the website. It's noted in the staff report that it's finally finished, and that it's gone to at least several state agencies, but the public has not been able to see it yet, and I assume by what it said in the staff report that it's going to be coming out at that time, not until September, but with your famous line of always wanting to be transparent, city council, I'm asking if you would get that posted this week so we could read it. Thanks.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open for anybody that can't stay for items on the agenda, or any other items you'd like to speak about. Looking around, seeing none. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council, couple of things to address if I could call on some staff for help. Mr. Nelson had some questions about Cayucus versus Morro Bay sewer fees and water fees, if we could maybe, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins to address that, and maybe statements that were made at Coastal Commission, respond to that, please, thanks.
Yeah, the article was pretty clear, it was talking about $98 for the sewer charge, and what we've been saying all along is the water and sewer combined between Morro Bay and Cayucus is virtually the same. Never been made claims otherwise. I think Rob could probably answer the questions related to trees.
Okay. And that's my next agenda, I think I've got two things here, one was, or three things, one, Lila Kaiser Park, Betty, I didn't catch the name of the trees, but two trees were cut down, and stone blocks were replaced. Rob, do you have any idea as to what maybe is going on there?
I'll have to check into that and get back to council on that information.
Okay, we'll make a note of that to respond. And then also, the eucalyptus trees close to the wells dying, any information that you're aware of on that?
I don't have any information at this meeting.
Could be checked out as well, okay. And then I'll ask you also about when we might see the addendum to the Environmental Impact Report posted online, website?
I was checking on the WRF website, it will be either up today, this evening, or tomorrow morning, it's not up there yet. Let me just refresh and see if it, clear the cache and see if it's there. No, not quite yet, so it'll be on the WRF project website tomorrow morning.
Okay, great, thank you for that, appreciate that. With that, we will move to item A in the agenda, the consent agenda, and I will again open up public comment, I do have two speaker slips, I'll call first, and then open it up generally for any of the consent items. Carolyn Brinkman, regarding item A3, welcome, Carolyn.
Good evening, council and staff and people in the community. I've been looking at the WRF Program Managers' Report with the monthly budget and the progress report for the WRF, and I've got a couple of questions. The first one has to do with the recycled water management plan that's required by the Coastal Commission as part of the conditions for the permit. I am wondering if that plan is going to be made available to the community online, or will it be brought back to the council? I found that the Coastal Commission was asking for some pretty significant information in that plan, and here are the relevant parts. First of all, the CCC wants to ensure that the maximum amount of tertiary treated recycled water is produced, and the maximum amount of such water is used for benefit, to benefit the community. The CC wants to see the plan for injecting recycled water underground in locations that will maximize its ability for groundwater replenishment of potable reuse water, including over the long term, so they kind of want to know, you know, for instance, what's going to happen if their sea level rise, if the plan is for the water to go into the aquifer. And it wants to see backup plans for replacing existing potable water use with recycled water use where feasible and appropriate, including with respect to both urban and agricultural reuse. That means, show us what the city will do if indirect potable water reuse doesn't work. Show us the agricultural and urban reuse plans for that water. So I just found that that management plan for the recycled water is asking for some pretty significant planning for not only now, but for the future. So I think that that plan should come back to the council and be made available to the community. And then question two has to do with some of the actions to overcome challenges and the likely outcomes for two of the challenges that were cited in that report, and I'm hoping the program manager can tell us, answer some of these questions. One problem seems to be the difficulty getting permission to access two properties key to moving forward. GSI needs to access the properties for hydrogeology work before it can complete its feasibility study, and the designs team for the conveyance facilities needs access to the properties for potholing to see what utilities might be under the surface of the facility's route. The two properties are owned by PG and E and Vistra. So I'm just wondering if we could hear about the consequences of those problems.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Regarding item A4, Dave Nelson, again, Dave, welcome. Again, Dave, welcome.
David Nelson, Morro Bay. Again, on A4, we're going to pre-zone a piece of land. Do we own the piece of land yet? How much is this piece of land going to cost us? And I haven't heard any talks, talk of that. I don't know anybody that knows. I mean, I know that you do secret things for real estate negotiation, but we knew what the regetti property was going to cost, and we knew what other pieces of property were going to cost. I personally don't know what this is going to cost that we're pre-zoning. And again, I've got my fingers crossed. I have rumors out there. If you think the nutmeg people are going to sue you, wait till you see what happens with this piece of land. You're closer to the estuary than Los Osos was, and they were made to move their sewer from next to the library because of the proximity to this estuary. This is a national estuary. We don't have very many of these, and this city has a long record of not caring about that estuary. Sixteen years, I fought a power plant that was killing the estuary, and our city decided they would live in their illusion that the power plant didn't do anything to our estuary. And you guys are doing the same thing. This is a danger. You look at every sewer plant that's been built in this county since I've been here, since '79, every one of them has had leaking events. What are you going to do when it leaks into the back bay? What are you going to do? Oh, gee, we didn't think it was going to happen. Well, that's going to really hurt that estuary. I mean, it just blows my mind. It's cheaper to do it someplace else and less damaging. It's one thing if a sewer flows into the ocean. It can recover. If it flows into this back bay, it's not going to recover. We're going to have more damage than we had from the power plant. And like I say, this city has a long history of looking the other way when it comes to that estuary, but there's people out there that are paid to guard this thing, and they're going to hear about this, and they are hearing about it. And if you think the nutmeg people are going to drive you crazy in Morro Valley, wait till you see what happens with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Public comment is still open for the consent agenda. Any items on consent agenda? If you'd like to come forward and speak regarding those, please do so now. Looking around, seeing none. I will close public comment, bring it back to council. I will pull item A3 and A4 so that we can respond to those questions. Are there any other items that council members would like to see pulled? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of item A1, A2, A5, and A6.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember McPherson, motion to approve A1, A2, A5, and A6. Councilmember Davis seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Then I will pull A3 and ask our esteemed, let's see, is Eric here tonight or Rob? Eric or Rob? Would you like to respond to Ms. Brinkman's questions regarding recycled water management plan? When that will be made available to the committee? Will it be online? And she cited a number of coastal requirements for the plan, other uses, specification in the plan. And then also, secondarily, the property access issues. Maybe a further explanation of that. Thank you, Mr. Casares.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, Eric Casares, the city's WRF Program Manager. So to address the first question about the recycled water management plan, so the NOI that the city received for the coastal development permit requires probably seven or eight different things that need to be done before the facility can be operated. There's a number of things that have to be done before the city officially receives its CDP or can start construction on the water reclamation facility, one of those being the recycled water management plan. So that recycled water management plan asks for a number of different things, but there is a great deal of overlap between that recycled water management plan and the recycled water feasibility study that was done back in 2017, 2018, which essentially led the city down the path initially to potable reuse. So a number of those items that were looked at were using the water for groundwater injection or groundwater replenishment versus using them from non-potable usage, so sending them up the valley for ag irrigation and those types of things. So we have been talking to staff about that requirement and the plan right now and what we're currently working on is kind of a short document that will, we will append the recycled water feasibility study, too, that essentially points the Coastal Commission in the direction where they need to go in that larger report to be able to answer their questions. Now, there are a number of questions that they have about kind of from this point going forward until we actually start to inject the water, how are we going to get from this, you know, point A to point B? And that is going to be a description of a bunch of the hydrogeological work that we're currently doing and the design effort that'll follow that and those steps. So that's our plan there. In terms of bringing that back to council, we haven't discussed that internally, but we'll look at the schedule and figure out when the most appropriate time to bring that back would be so we can get back on that. In regards to the other questions in terms of accessing the Vistra and PG&E properties, we have made a great deal of progress with that over the last few months. So a couple of the things, I'll kind of split things up a little bit between the hydrogeologic studies that are needed to support the potable reuse project. We've got a little bit more time on that, and granted, we have been delayed there, but really the critical items have been for the conveyance facilities related to the design of the pipelines. We do have access to the properties. We have gotten access to the properties in order to do both the geotechnical work that we've needed to do as well as the surveying work to get that process moving forward. All of that work is currently done. We don't need to do any other work on those properties to be able to continue the design of those pipelines. On the hydrogeo side, we have been coordinating with them, with the folks from Vistra, and trying to use one of the existing well for doing some pump testing that will help us characterize that west area in terms of identifying which is the best site for injection. We have come to an agreement there that those activities would be covered under the coastal development permit once the city receives its coastal development permit. So once we receive the coastal development permit, we will be able to move forward with the hydrogeo work that we need to do on the west side to be able to characterize that west area. So that's kind of a summary of those two items.
Great. I appreciate that. And then I'll, since I pulled A4 as well, I don't know if you want to speak to the question Mr. Nelson had about do we own the land and the cost of the land? Maybe an update on that? Or Rob, you want to take that?
We do not own the land yet. We're working with a property owner on a sales, purchase-sales agreement. The property has been appraised, and it is well within our budgeted amount for property purchase, just over $300,000 for the, what's the appraisal?
For 27.
27.6 acres.
Six acres. Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will go ahead and move approval of A3 and A4.
Second.
Motion by myself for approval of A3 and A4, second by councilmember Davis. Any discussion on that?
I just have one question.
Sure, absolutely.
Are the monthly reports reviewed by CFAC? I've lost track of what they're reviewing and what they're not reviewing.
CFAC recommended that they go to a quarterly report.
So they're reviewing the quarterly report.
Right. And we talked about that last time.
And we're taking monthly reports on consent?
Correct. Yeah. We decided to do that several meetings ago, and so for two months, we get it on consent, and then quarterly, we get a live presentation. Yeah. Other questions? Not? Roll call vote.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Can you maybe change mics if you have access to one? Sorry. Can't hear you. Thank you.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries four, one.
Great. Thank you. That concludes our consent agenda. We have no public hearing items. I'll move to our business items. Item C1 is consideration of including vacation rentals and recreational vehicle parks in the Tourism Business Improvement District Assessment. Turn it over to our city manager and our tourism director for their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and community members. I'm going to go through this presentation quickly but to allow for plenty of time for public comment and also questions from council members. So ultimately, what this item is, is a consideration of including vacation rentals and recreational vehicle parks into the Tourism Business Improvement District or assessment. So moving right along, a quick kind of background on the two uses. Vacation rentals, yeah, we've had these in Morro Bay for quite a while. Basically, they're residents that are used for vacation dwelling units, and at present, we have approximately 250 vacation rentals permitted and about 90 folks on the waiting list. And basically, vacation rentals, the short-term vacation rentals, anything 31 days or less to qualify, and they must be permitted through the city to conduct that business. And as I said, we have 250 that currently have licenses and 90 in the waiting. And just kind of to keep council updated and the community updated, when we talk about the vacation rental policy, the bigger global policy, that's kind of behind the General Plan Local Coastal Program update, which is currently kind of going back and forth between city staff and coastal staff. So we will, as we told council a while ago, we won't take up vacation rental policy until that is completed because we will need coastal input on that, and we expect a lot of back and forth on that. So in order to be expeditious on the General Plan Local Coastal Program, we're putting that one on pause. Moving on to the RV parks, which we currently have six in the city of Morro Bay. They're a mixture of short-term, which are 30 days or less, and long-term for 31 days or more. During the shoulder, in winter months, RVs host more long-term renters. In the summer months, we see more of the short-term variety. Each one is a little different than the other, and important to note that they operate in a different ecosystem altogether in terms of some of their competitors within our borders and without our borders. With the state RV parks, they don't pay TOT by state law. And then we have folks, RV parks just outside our borders that are on unincorporated parts of the county that don't pay TOT or assessments. And most RV parks are booked a year out in advance. And this just gives you kind of an overview of the existing RV parks, both the, within the city and then the state-owned within the city, and potential available spaces for short-term rentals. So this has been a discussion for quite some time, at least the past couple of years. Been attempts to have a conversation about including vacation rentals and RV parks into the T-Bid. We are the only city within the county of San Luis Obispo that doesn't have RVs and VRs participating in the T-Bid. And those cities do have equal rates across the board. Not to say that's the right thing to do, but that's just to kind of explain kind of the context we're in. But when it gets into the unincorporated areas, it becomes a lot more complicated, and I'm sure we'll hear about that from folks in the public comment section. So that being said, we had some misfires in attempts to bring this conversation forward to the T-Bid and council, but this year took a different approach on the behest of T-Bid Advisory Board to do more community outreach in the beginning, to really spend time with vacation rental owners and RV park owners to get their input and also help explain kind of what the T-Bid does for them already and what it could do in the future if they join and increase the available resources by joining the assessment. There's been three public meetings, and the facilitator, who does not have a stake in this game, she does not live in Morro Bay, but she understands the industry, who helped do this outreach, spoke to individuals one-on-one but also helped run these meetings and have pretty good documentation of the concerns raised by RV park owners and VR owners as well. There was two meetings held in May that was brought back to the T-Bid, and the T-Bid Board advised there'd be one more outreach meeting to really discuss kind of how it would all function if they were brought into the T-Bid and what the expectations would be moving forward. So as I mentioned, this slide has a bit of data, so I'll take my time on this. So if we were to go back to fiscal year 17, 18, and were to add vacation rentals and RVs into the assessment at equal assessment rates, hotels would represent about 78 or 79% of the total pot. Our VRs would be about 14 and change, and RVs would be about 7% just to show overall economic value. Again, the neighboring T-Bid assessments, city of Slow, Paso, Tascadero, Pismo, and Royal Grande have VRs participating at 2%, and those that have RV parks also are participating at 2%. And it gets very confusing quickly with the unincorporated areas. But I guess the kind of best way to think of it is that unincorporated, they pretty much don't have to participate in TOT, and very few participate in even the visits locale. And just for context, the neighboring T-Bid budgets, the ones we were able to pick up in our research, Pismo's T-Bid budget is 2.2 million, Slow's is 1.5, and Paso's is 1.1, and ours is just north of 900,000. So a lot of the discussion, after the first initial discussions was how, excuse me, this is really annoying. Let's see if this works better. No, that's dead. Okay, I'll keep going. Was about how the different assessment rates, what that would do for overall revenue, and then a lot of good discussions about, you know, the pros and cons of those different varieties, and also just, you know, some concerns about certain folks being involved at all based on kind of concerns about equity and competition with existing or comparable uses inside the city and outside. But looking at the 3% across the board, if we go back again to fiscal year 17, 18, hotels at 3% generate 800,000. RV parks at 3% would have generated 72,000, and VRs would have generated about 146, which would have brought the budget up from 805 to a million and change. And if you take it down to 2%, you see the value drops if all three were participating at 2% and if all were participating at 2.5%. So this just gives you kind of an overall view of kind of how the percentages and assessments would relate back to overall revenues. And this has a lot of information on it, but ultimately, what it depicts is if RVs and VRs came in mid-year, it would net the city approximately $100,000 in new revenues for marketing. And this kind of shows how staff would recommend at least the first six months of allocating those resources, and primarily, most of it would be focused on marketing, the entire destination, and not one use over another. So the options that were discussed at the T-Bid Advisory Board, the staff didn't make a recommendation to T-Bid. They discussed the 3% all being brought in at the same rate. There's quite a bit of discussion about bringing hotels down to 2.5% and bringing VRs and RVs in at that same rate. Discussion about 3% for hotels, VRs at 2, and RVs at 1, and no inclusion of VRs and RVs. So those were sort of the high-level discussions. There was also talk about phasing in and ratcheting up the rates over time, but that would become very time-consuming and complicated. So ultimately, a lot of the discussion was focused on those rates options. As far as if council was interested in bringing them regardless of rate, there's a pretty drawn-out process that we can get into in the details, but at a high level, it would start tonight, direction provided. We would need to do an initial noticing. We'd have to come back with a resolution of intent. There'd have to be a public hearing. The T-Bid would be involved. And so if we started the process tonight, we could probably, in theory, have everybody brought in and implemented by early next year, in 2020. But again, we would be happy to kind of go into those details. I just don't want to belabor it right now. So the, again, the bulk of the discussion at T-Bid was around those various assessment rate options. T-Bid ultimately made the recommendation for 3% for all as it provided the highest potential revenue of the various options, and it had equity or equality, if you want, across the three uses because they'd be paying in the same amount. And as we read the state code, you're supposed to, there's supposed to be equality in terms of of benefit received. So it'd be hard, I think, in some respects, if they're paying at different rates, to differentiate different levels of service. It could become complicated quickly. Again, there were concerns raised by RV park owners about competitiveness within the City of Morro Bay with the two state-run RV parks not paying TOT or an assessment, and the nearby unincorporated county RV parks, the same. VRs, you know, raised a lot of concerns, but the primary one was, you know, we don't need this, or we're concerned we're not going to get the same value. Hoteliers dominate the board or kind of the overall weight, and concerned that it would be skewed towards them. And other options were also raised that may address some of those concerns. But ultimately, you know, in the T-Bid's analysis and staff's concurrence, move forward with a 3% recommendation to city council, again, because it does address the issue of equity, looking at how it's conducted in all the other cities in the county, and the greatest potential revenue source for marketing the entire region, understanding the concerns raised by vacation rental owners, that they should receive a bang for the buck, and it should be, we should look at marketing not for any particular type of venue, but for the entire destination. That's primarily how we already do it, but we would take great pains to ensure that's across all, how the monies are spent, that there wouldn't be any one beneficiary over another, that it's really about marketing the area. And again, the argument that they don't need the marketing dollars, it's sort of counterfactual, but ultimately, vacation rentals have sort of come into vogue around the same time that T-Bid was originated. And so they, a lot of them are operating with the marketing going on in the background. So I think it's a harder argument to make that that hasn't had any positive effect on their business. So ultimately, that was, the recommendation was made. But again, the notes, intake notes, kind of lay out in detail the concerns raised by VRs and RV park owners, you know, legitimate concerns, of course, but that was, again, the hard recommendation made by the T-Bid. They had a lot of discussion about those options. So we're happy to answer any questions about the process, about the various options, concerns raised by RV park owners and VRs as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate that, and for the staff report as well. We have before us tonight a recommendation to consider initiating a process to include VRs and RVs into the T-Bid. As Mr. Collins outlined, and if you're interested in asking, the city attorney could elaborate on, there is a process for that that we would have to go through if we decided to do that that could be completed over a period of time estimated somewhere around the first of the year. But this isn't the end-all in terms of any decision, just so that you know that. Well, so with that, I'll open it up to council questions. Sure. Jeff starts off. Thanks.
Thank you for the report, bringing this forward. Obviously, it's been an issue that's been kicked around for good reason for a long time in this community, and I think your report is very helpful. I have some questions. So in looking at this, the Parking and Business Improvement Act 1989, raise revenues for specific purposes as defined by state law incorporated, so municipal code defines that. Does this act allow other uses for the revenues if we were to change our municipal code? The reason I ask is because it's called the Parking and Business Improvement Act, so are physical improvements potentially part of these revenues, or can only be spent on marketing?
It's a, Chris can kind of go into detail on the legal side. There are cities that have done that. Pismo has done that recently. You know, I had a good conversation with their city manager, and kind of what he relayed to me is that you have to be very, very, very careful. If you're going to do physical improvements with T-Bid dollars, there has to be a direct nexus between whatever those improvements are and furthering, you know, overnight stays, because that's the purpose of the marketing dollars, is to encourage that. So if there can be a direct nexus tied to that, you may be on solid grounds, but you're also liable to lawsuits if folks feel like there isn't a direct connection. So the burden of proof is on the city to make that claim and defend that claim.
So would we have to change our municipal code in order to do some projects like that or not?
You wouldn't change the municipal code. You would change the report. So, you know, Chris can go into detail again, but the way, any change to the assessment requires a report to T-Bid, which outlines six criterion, that sort of defines the boundaries and defines the uses and purposes, et cetera. So it could include, in addition to marketing, it could include specific projects, infrastructure projects that are directly tied and direct nexus, strong nexus to furthering overnight stays. That could be part of the report. You don't have to change the ordinance or municipal code, but that's what moves forward, and of course, that's all subject to protest by all those that would be included in the assessment.
Okay, okay. You on board with that, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You agree.
Yeah. My next question is, let's see. So how and when and who does the audits for T-Bid in general? And who pays for it? Who pays for the audits? I mean, don't you audit the hotels, or is it honor system, or how does all that work?
We don't currently audit our TOT at this point. It's something we could do. We'd likely hire an outside firm to come in and do that, but we don't have a practice in place right now.
So it's pretty much the honor system?
Correct.
Okay. If we were to do audits, could T-Bid funds be used to pay for that?
No, I don't believe so. Yeah.
You don't have to.
We wouldn't recommend using those because you're auditing the hotel receipts, which is what our TOT is based on, and that's general fund money. The T-Bid itself is based on receipts, so it's the same.
Okay. And then there are also some comments in here about staff time, and it sounds to me in reading it that what you would prefer is that the rates be even from a staff management standpoint. Is that true?
It makes it more defendable if they're all at the same rate. If there's a discrepancy in percentages, then we have to ensure that they're getting comparable benefit for their level of play. And again, I understand the RV argument, you know, about their competitive or disadvantage that's brought up with that. But if all are to be included, we would recommend that they all be at the same rate.
Okay. And then the last thing, and I probably shouldn't do this, but I did some math, and I'm either going to really embarrass myself, or I'll make a point, or both, but I wanted to. I looked at the numbers that you have on page 65 of the staff report there, and just the hotel number. So for 1718, the hotel number at the 3% shows a total of 805, about $806,000, right? Are you on, did you get to that page? Okay, I'll wait for you.
Page 65, you said? Yes, okay.
Yeah, page 65, which is where you have the chart with the numbers. Okay, so the first column at the left shows the hotel total at about $806,000, right?
Yes.
Now, I divided that by 12 months and came up with an average of $67,000, $152 monthly. Okay. Then I divided that by the total number of rooms, which is 923 rooms, which came to $75.00 and 75 cents per room per month. Then I, bear with me here, then I divided that by 30 days, and I came up with $2.43 per night per room. Is my math correct, or am I doing something really wrong here?
I would, I trust your math.
You do.
If you put it in a calculator, I do.
I did put it in a calculator. So anyway, what I did was that was the same calculation for all three types with a 3%. And what I came up with, and please, if I'm wrong, please, somebody correct me, but for vacation rentals, I came up with, if they're charged the 3% rate, $6.52 per night for a vacation rental. For an RV space, it would be 75 cents a night per space at 3%. If I did the math wrong, let me know, but I did it about three times. I don't know, those are the numbers I came with. I just wanted to double-check if that makes sense to.
Yeah. So, I mean, like I said.
You'll have to answer right now.
Yeah.
Is that, did you have a question? I was just.
The question is, you know, is my math correct?
Is your math correct? Yeah, and I think, you know, one nuance there is that, you know, there's the 913 rooms, but then vacation rentals, there's, in theory, 250 that could have one room or multiple rooms. So it might change the math a little bit.
Right, right. Okay. Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Marvellous.
Sure, thanks. Well, just to follow up with your math, I had asked the question about what the average rates were in vacation rentals, and I was told that you don't really have that information. So I'm kind of curious now to know how you came up with these numbers, if we don't really know how much we're charging or how much vacation rentals are charging for their rooms.
Yeah, that was based on the, I think that was TOT generation is probably where we got the numbers. Is that right? Yeah. So that was total TOT for RV. We know that. And total TOT for vacation rental, we know that. And so we took that and used that to do math, and that's where we got that number. But we still don't know, you know, I did a little bit of search based on your question on vacation rental, RV, VR, Airbnb, and that's where I sort of got that range, that typically it's in 150 to $300 a night. Of course, that's summer rates, but that goes down. But that's my cursory review of what I saw.
Right. So really, at this point, we're kind of guessing at some of these, because we know we have illegal vacation rentals, and we know that probably if we could get that issue straightened out, we would have a better sense of how much money we could bring in.
Potentially. I mean, although we assume that if they're operating illegally, they're also not remitting TOT or T-Bid.
That's what I mean.
Right. So we do have a hard cap on the number. So I think we're looking to move forward with the online auditing tool for vacation rentals, which would help address the illegal operators, and would take them out of the market. But I don't know if that would have any bearing. It may have bearing on our, maybe on TOT, but ultimately, I don't think so on the T-Bid, because they wouldn't be remitting that if they're operating illegally, my assumption.
Right. So you mentioned the changes, could we make changes to how the money is spent? And I also had that question. And it sounds like we could do that. And so we could also include other types of businesses in the bid as well. So we could perhaps also include restaurants and businesses that service tourists primarily? Is that something that we also could do to the ordinance?
To the, to the assessment, yes. You could add, you could add retail, and you could add restaurants. I think Santa Cruz County does. I think they operate a little differently. I'm not sure if it's what the direct model comparison would be to ours, but there are assessments that do that. I would caution against making the decision tonight without having engaged them, but you could, you could, in theory.
Yeah, no, really, my question was just, what can we legally do with respect to the law or the ordinance to broaden it to more people or more things that are affected by tourism? So we can look at it holistically and say, long-term, thinking about our tourist industry, which is so important, what can we include to expand the amount of money we have available and what we spend it on to make sure that people come back to Morro Bay?
Yes, precisely.
And have something to do while they're here. Okay. And then I wanted to ask a question about what was in your presentation, and you said that for cities that have RV parks, they also assess at 2%. But which cities are that? Are they?
I think RV parks are Pismo and maybe Paso, but again, I think the RV park owners would know better than I. I just know there's a couple that do have them, but not a lot.
And just to be clear, and maybe we can ask them when they come up, do they pay into TOT and into the T-Bid?
In the cities, yes, they do.
In the cities, they do, but not in the county?
On the unincorporated, it's very complicated, but my, again, they'll correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is they don't pay TOT because the county doesn't have a way of collecting, and they don't pay into unincorporated T-Bid, which is another thing. And then they may pay into visit loco, but again, they might be able to educate us on that.
Okay.
Yes.
And you mentioned in here honoring prior contracts, and I just wanted to be clear what that refers to, and could you explain that?
Yes, it was a very good point raised by members of the public who came to speak at T-Bid last meeting. Basically, they want us to honor the, contracts are let, you know, sometimes six months in advance, sometimes later, further out, you know, and with like, here's their contract, here's what you're going to pay. And so if we were to add this 3% or whatever the rate would be, it would sort of, it'd certainly be a breach of contract, but it would sort of be like a last-minute change. So they want to say, regardless of when that reservation is for, so long as the reservation was executed, or the agreement was executed before the T-Bid starts, that they wouldn't have to pay that assessment. But once contracts are let after the T-Bid is originated, or they're part of the T-Bid, then they would have to pay the 3%. So it's just trying to be consistent with those who operate under one set of circumstances and another.
Right. And do we think that we can enact a VR ordinance before this would take effect if we follow this timeline?
No, I do not.
You don't think we're going to get it done before the end of the year?
We are, Scott Graham can go into more detail, but we've, we are still working with Coastal Commission on the local coastal program side and the general plan, and now they're picking up the zoning code. And so that, all that has to be completed, has to come back to the planning commission, go through a lengthy process there, and come to city council. We anticipate that would take the rest, remainder of the year, calendar year, probably, and then at which point we'd be able to pick up the vacation rental ordinance.
I thought we were going to separate out vacation rentals from the general plan.
Yes, we are.
So couldn't we kind of put a hold on the general plan and take up the vacation rentals before, or is there a reason why it has to be done after?
Yeah, so the very staff that, Coastal Commission, that's been engaged and submit 300 comments to staff back on the local coastal program, and general plan would have to pause that and take this up, understanding that this would, this process would take at least six months, probably. So we've been working on General Plan Local Coastal Program for five, six years, so we'd really like to see that completed. I think they would too. So that, and we're going through another grant process to complete that work. So that's sort of the, that's what we would recommend, and so we stay on that course.
Okay. And I did watch the T-Bid meeting, so I noticed that there was a question asked about the difference between the 1989 law and the 1994 law, and I'm just wondering if you could explain that. Excuse me.
Sure. The 1989 law and 1994 law both establish business improvement districts. They have different procedures, and also they have different capabilities. The 89 law, which the city currently has its ordinance, is able to levy assessments on just businesses. The 94 law can assess it on both businesses and property. And there's also a difference in what occurs annually and how long they can last. Under the 89 law, it can exist indefinitely, the business improvement district once established, but there needs to be an annual report that's brought to council, and then an annual protest procedure that occurs on whether or not they're going to be re-levered the next year, which council has seen occur annually with the current T-Bid. But it can continue indefinitely, as long as every year it's renewed. Under the 94 law, you can establish it initially for up to five years, and then it lasts for that five years. And then when the five years is up, you have to renew it, and then thereafter, you can keep doing it five and up to 10 years thereafter. So the process is a little different. The end result is the same, that you're levying assessments on businesses or property, if you do the 94, for products and services and benefits that benefit the business and/or property that you're levying the assessment on.
Okay. So it sounds like it's a little bit less staff work if you renewed it every five years as opposed, is that the main difference, really?
That is one of the major differences.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you very much. Chris, you said that the 89 law renewal is appropriate. Chris, you said that the 89 law renewal is a protest vote?
Yes.
And the 94 law is a renewal. Does that mean that it requires a positive vote to reaffirm?
It's the same procedure, the same protest process.
It's protest, again?
Yes.
Okay. And Scott, how many members are on the T-Bid board?
We have seven members, two at-large and five hoteliers.
Okay, and the hotelier seats are, are they classified in any way?
Size, by size? I think there's, you know, across the spectrum of large and small. Does that help?
No?
Okay. Jen, do you want to come up and complete the sentence? Thanks.
Good evening, council mayor. So we have seats that are first right is for larger hotels and then some that are for smaller, but if you don't have a hotel that fills one of those specific, you can put a different hotelier in there. So we do have two larger hoteliers that sit on the board. One is in at Morro Bay and the other one is Allen Group that has San Marcos Masterpiece and La Serena. And then we have some smaller hotels as well that sit on the board.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
Do we have examples of what Pismo's done with their money?
Beyond the marketing, yes, they, they're doing their plaza and the nexus there is that it could be used for concerts and events. That's one example. I know there was something else that they're doing that maybe Jen can help me, remind me on, but the remainder of the funds are used for marketing. So they were, again, able to, to work with the hoteliers and RV owners, VRs and RV owners to understand the, the value of, of these infrastructure improvements and indirectly connect it to visitor stays.
The second one was for the Pismo Preserve. And this 1% has just started, so it's pretty new, and it's a five-year that they're doing the increase for those two, two things.
And what would be the process we would need to go to if we were going to change things to use money in that way?
Same process. If you wanted to initiate that now or wait till next year, you know, obviously there'd be a lot of, I would recommend there'd be a lot of outreach to all the parties that would be participants in the T-Bid and understand what the city's ultimate goals are and why a change in use is warranted. And then you would follow the same process. You would include in the report to T-Bid after you initiate the, the noticing of, you know, here's the report, here's the boundaries, here the, who would be assessed, and here's what the, the benefit received would be. And that's where you would spell out what those specific projects are. And then go through the, the protests, the public hearing, et cetera. And that's, that's how you could do it. So it doesn't require a change of the ordinance, it's just how the report is issued.
And, but only those who pay into the T-Bid would have a say in that. So we've heard, say, from, at least I've heard from vacation rental owners who have said, "I'm okay to pay the money, but I don't want the money to only go to marketing. I'd like the money to go to improvements to the product of Morro Bay." So those folks, if they were in the T-Bid, would have a say in changing the report, but if they weren't in the T-Bid, would not have a say in that?
I mean, depends on how you look at it. Ultimately, the T-Bid board would be the recommending body to council, but they do take input like council does. But if they had a representative on the board, you know, that would have that direct input from, from a board member on that. Like I said, ultimately, if, if that's a direction that council would like to pursue, we recommend that be kind of part of an overall package of, with a lot of time to actually assess what the needs are and where the biggest bang for the buck is if we were going to divert funds for, for marketing for that purpose.
And then what is there to ensure that, given the, the different percentages, like the hotels have a far greater percentage of voices in the T-Bid, and I assume seats on the board? So what would, what guarantees for VRs or RVs that their voice is heard if they come into this?
Yes, I think it'd be important to look at the board makeup. That would be one way of looking at it. Again, the also is the, you know, we have to uphold the law, and if we are going to include VRs and RVs, we have to ensure that, that there's equal benefit across the board and that there isn't one, one segment of the industry being favored over another in terms of how the, the dollars allocated. We, we don't do, typically do much that's hotel-specific. So what we do, we would no longer do, and it would just be the general marketing of the, Morro Bay as the destination.
But what's their mechanism if they disagree or they feel like their interests, they've been brought into the T-Bid, they don't have as large of a voice, and they don't feel like things are equal?
They, you know, could sue the city. I mean, I think ultimately that would be their, that's, that's your typical recourse if, if they believe that we're not legally abiding by the code. That's one recourse, but of course, they have the T-Bid and they have city council and they have staff. But again, like I said, most of the marketing dollars is for the region generally. It's not about Hotel X versus Hotel Y. That's not how we've approached it to begin with and certainly how we wouldn't carry forward and moving, moving forward if those uses were part of the T-Bid. Yeah.
Councilwoman Addis, in answer to how the money is budgeted and what it's spent upon, it's important to note that, of course, T-Bid recommends a budget to council, and you all either accept it or you modify it. So at the end of the day, you know, the five of you up there get to decide on what the final budget and the appropriations will be. Typically, a lot of deference is given to the T-Bid board, but if a budget were to come to you and you wanted the money spent differently, then you could modify that report. So it's really up to the five elected council members to decide how the money's going to be spent within the constraints of you need to have a nexus between what the money's spent on and a benefit to the people paying the assessments.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Couple of added questions. Thank you for your questions, by the way. Several of mine were answered, I won't repeat them. Could you describe destination marketing for me, Jen? And what that concept means and who benefits, in your opinion, as our director, by destination marketing?
Sure. I would say probably most of us when we're looking for a vacation, we're not saying, "I want to go to stay at that hotel unless it's something very unusual." Usually, you're saying, "I want to go to Florida," or "I want to go to Tahiti." You're going to a destination, and you're promoting out that physical destination, not the hotel once you get there. So you decide where you want to go, which is the destination, and then from there, you decide what you're going to do while you're there, whether it's where you stay or eat or activities that you do. So if, if you look at most of our promotion that we do right now, it's very destination-focused. We have our outdoor goal videos that are running and all of our blogs and our social media posts are mainly about Morro Bay as a whole. And coming out of our strategic plan, the focus was art and culture, national estuary, outdoor recreation, and those are our really three major fundamental things that we really push for our destination.
So our strategic plan is titled a destination marketing strategic plan? Is that correct?
Well, it's not officially titled that, but that's what it is. It's, we're a destination organization, marketing organization.
So I just want to be clear, for the most part, the majority of the marketing that the T-Bid does or your department does, as you administrate that for the city, is to market the city as a whole as a destination rather than to an individual overnight stay park or hotel or whatever?
Right. That's correct. We did put in some very specific key metrics so we could see if people were booking when we started two years ago, because you didn't have that link to see people were seeing the ad and booking. So we'd start doing passports and things that we could actually see functionality that they were booking a night stay from that passport or for getting a free bottle of wine. But those are very small components of what we do, and now that we have the Adara tracking system in place, we could easily lose that part of it and still function very well.
Okay, and then could you address the issue of commensurate value across all the entities that might benefit from the bid? And I'm speaking about RV parks, vacation rentals, and hoteliers specifically. Would the commensurate value, in your opinion, be equivalent for those with the type of marketing that the bid does, T-Bid does?
My opinion, yes, it would be, for sure. Yeah, I, I think that the, with the strategic plan in place, our new campaigns are really strong, and I think they give equal value to everybody, residents included. They're really nice.
And then I, boy, I did some of the same math that councilmember Heller did, and I might have gotten a different answer, but my logic, I don't know if it's right, but I looked at the staff report, page 65, just trying to get an idea of cost per stay day, call it. And I looked at the fact that a 3% RV assessment would, would be about $72,000 in bid revenue, T-Bid revenue. When I say bid, I mean T-Bid. And if we have 266 spaces, according to the report, available times 365 days, that's 97,000 space days, as I call them, available. Is that a correct assumption?
Probably.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I took the 97,000 and the 72,000, and I divided the 72,000 by the 97,000 space days, and I got about 74 cents per space day as the cost potentially to an RV park. I did the same thing for VRs, assuming 250 vacation rentals, and I know that they're not all operative, but I'm just making that assumption, times 365 days is, is about the same, 91,000 VR days available. And if you took the potential revenue at 3%, 146,000 divided by those number of VR days, it comes to a buck 60 a day. And so my first question is, do we know the average cost for the stay at a state park versus the average cost daily for the stay at one of our RV parks? Is there a large differential in that, or do you have any data to share that?
So I stay at state parks quite often, actually.
Oh, then you might know.
It's about $38 a night, depending on it. I pulled up a couple of the RV sites. I'm sorry, I camp, so I'm not an RV-er, so it might be a lower cost because I'm in a, in a tent space. How much is it?
$50.
$50 for state, there you go. Are, looking at some of the RV parks, they look like they're between 40 and 48 dollars a night. And I looked at Pismo sites as well, and they're like 50 to 60, so.
Again, not rocket science, not holding you to this, about 50 bucks a night at a state park, maybe the same for an RV park. And I was just thinking out loud, would 74 cents additional cost per space day for an RV park be a disincentive for maybe a consumer making a decision to stay there with that added cost? And I don't know how you'd answer that, but that's just the logic that I'm using and also trying to compare that to commensurate value. And my last question is, I was trying to clarify in my own mind the questions that were asked about representation and service. I, I got the board representation, I think that was, that was clear to me, but I wasn't quite clear if VRs and if RV parks were brought into the T-Bid, how staff would service them in a manner similar to how we service right now the existing members of the bid, which are hoteliers for the most part?
Right, right.
Could you maybe elaborate on?
Sure.
What that service is and what that might look like?
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah.
So some of that will go away. Like I mentioned, the things are hotel-specific, we would not be doing. As far as things that we service them on, visitor guides, they pick those up now at the visitor center, we don't take those out. So a lot of that stuff is not actually done by staff. We're pretty much email-driven, so I'll email out to everybody, including hotels and restaurants and retail, asking for specials or offers. And so we would just keep that going like we always do. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
And I guess part of the same question would be, if VRs and RV parks came in to the T-Bid and were assessed, would they have on your marketing that, and we get a nice email, I guess, weekly or every other week from you, kind of going over specials and opportunities in Morro Bay? Would there be more inclusion of those entities mentioned in that advertising that we see?
For sure.
If they were in?
For sure.
And what does that look like?
So right now on the email blast, there's a section for hotels at the bottom, only if they want to be on it. And I have maybe six hotels out of all of them that ask to be on it. So anybody could be on that that's in T-Bid, they're more than welcome to be on, there's no charge for it, and we could do that for them as well. Getting them up to speed, there's a ton of work to do. You know, we have to get them on the website and get all that content put together, and it's, it's a very big deal to get them up to, up to speed.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. With that, I do have, I'll open it up for public comment, by the way, on item C-1. I do have speaker slips, I'll start with those, and then again, anybody that hasn't had the chance to speak, I'll invite you up. First of all, Aaron Oakes. Aaron, welcome.
Thank you, members and staff. My name is Aaron Oakes of Morro Bay, and I want to express my support for the staff recommendation for a 3% T-Bid assessment for vacation rentals and RVs on an equity basis, but with a few caveats. For one, VRs and RV owners should have input on how their assessment funds are spent. And based on the presentation tonight, I don't really see a clear mechanism on how that would be achieved. I was concerned that, and about lawsuits being a recourse, I don't think we should go there. I think to protect the city, we should ensure stronger representation on the T-Bid board. One of the things I would recommend is revision of the T-Bid board bylaws to ensure that vacation rentals, vacation rental and RV owners have a seat on the board. And then also include additional community outreach. And another thing is, we need to do a little bit more to elaborate on how that money's being spent, because I think people in the community just think it's going to go toward marketing. I think there should be more than that, including developing a nexus for physical improvements, capital improvements with regard to tourism, how that would benefit them personally. I think we can do that. I believe Pismo Beach has some good language on that, that I would recommend staff look into. But I think there needs to be more specificity on how that money's being used. I mean, we're spending quite a bit on marketing, and I, I like to just see more discussion on that, really getting into the nitty-gritty of the budget and how that money's being spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Doug Clausen. Doug, welcome.
Mayor, council, and staff, I'm Doug Clausen from Morro Dunes RV Park. It seems like here we go again. When this all started the last time, the council was in favor of us being exempt because of all that, there's eight parks outside and within 15 miles of Morro Bay that don't pay a dime to anything. I pay 50 bucks, or I get 50 bucks, it, everything's taken out of that. They get 50 bucks, it goes into their pocket. So I don't feel that we should have to pay when nobody else is paying. It's, it's just not, not right. Kind of lost the words right now. You talk about things being fair, that's not fair. You want to say, you know, all the motel, the restaurants in town, the gift shops, they're benefiting probably more than we would, and they're not paying anything. So I just say, I hope you, you go along without having us in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next up for public comment is Michael Strickland. Michael, welcome.
Thank you, council and mayor. I'm a co-owner of Harborview RV Park, probably one of the smallest, and I had a question first off, if someone could answer it. Is this 3% assessment for, applied to just the lodging overnight stays, not to long-term? Is this 3% assessment for, applied to just the lodging overnight stays, not to long-term?
Okay. So this is public comment, your chance to make public comment, and
Great.
Not a back-and-forth, we'll try to maybe cover that as we get through everybody, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, as it relates to the RV parks, you know, as everybody knows, they're very unique. As the last gentleman spoke, and that, all the competition, it is very different, the RV parks versus motels. I think hotels and vacation rentals are the most alike. RVs, people come from all over the world, they do that for hotels too, but the competition is very, the dollars really do matter. $50, adding another dollar. I've had hundreds and hundreds of phone calls for people where a couple dollars matters when it comes to RV, and they'll stay outside of town just because we're right in town. We're right at the top of this hill, basically. And, you know, this actually doesn't apply so much because we're converting our park more of a long-term with park models and providing an affordable housing. So, we're not doing, and haven't been for over a year now, anything that funds into this at all, but I definitely don't support it because it's very unique, and RVs are, it's a different culture, it's a different group of people, and I don't think it's good. One comment that doesn't quite relate, apologize, just about the eucalyptus trees. I'm a well driller, a former well driller. I drilled 3,300 wells in 15 years, and so eucalyptus thrive next to wells, in fact, they destroy wells. So, this might not be a popular thing, but if there are any eucalyptus within 100 feet of any well, it should be cut down and there's a stump taken out, because I've seen dozens and dozens destroyed. They'll intrude a well even 150 feet down, so, thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for that, I appreciate that. And next up is Nick Duran. Nick, welcome.
Hello, council mayor, and I want to thank you for the more comfortable chairs in here. It's a pleasure. And before I begin, you know, I would go on record to say I'd be very much in favor of the 3% if it did go, at least half that money went to improvements. You know, we need to get off the cheap place to stay and give people some reason to stay here. I'm the principal for Beach and Bay and U Relax Vacation Rentals, and we manage 34 of the 153 vacation rentals that actually contribute more than $500 in TOT. So I want to be clear, when you have a number of 250, there's really only 153 are active, and 136 of those are managed by people like me. My particular company, we, looking at the last fiscal year, we paid 40% of the total TOT. So that's a number that I look at, because we're going to have to pay 65,000 to the T-Bid. So I personally, in my business, I have to pay 40% of what's being asked. This is four times my total spending on advertising for all my homes. So, four times what I spend today to get all my bookings, I'm going to spend four times more to Destination Market. This is, this should raise a few questions about how this money's being spent. I am disappointed in the process and the failure of the T-Bid board to even consider the input received and provided by myself and others. And in good faith, the transparent goal was only addressing shortfalls in their budget. They were pre-decided when they had their meeting, it's on the record. Based on my average stay of two and a half times what the hotels have in Moro Bay, they're trying to get to two nights. I'm at five, and I'm more than half-booked for next summer, just like the RV parks. This will, in fact, it'll very unfairly impact the VR guests that already contributes the most to the city. They stay two and a half times longer, spending money in the city. I'm resigned to the tax, I want to be part of it, but I do protest the undemographic process to have vacation rentals and trailer parks included. You have the hotelers, we may get one seat on the board, they voted us in because we don't really have a choice. We gave input in good faith, but it was never considered. What I suggest now, I know we're going to be part of it in some way, and I'm happy about that, but I really encourage the mayor and the council to put some oversight in place on the T-Bid board and on the advertising partner. They need to be fully accountable for delivering results that are at least better than one-to-one for the money spent. In my career with Fortune 100 companies, the return on advertising had to be at least tenfold. You spent a dollar, you hope to make 10. Even if the results that we look at last year, it's even, it's one for one. It's time to have clear expectations for this expenditure, and I'm looking for those clear measurable results if we're included. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick, appreciate that. Next up is Maggie Duran. Maggie, welcome.
Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity, and I don't have to reintroduce myself, I'm the other half of Beach and Bay Getaways, and I manage those same properties with Nick. I come before, and I did send an email out to all of you that I hope you saw and read about my frustration as far as how the whole community outreach program went, so I'm not going to go into that anymore, it is what it is. But I come before you tonight at the 11th hour of this issue, and as the final decision-makers, hoping that logic will prevail in your vote tonight. You all received, or I'm sorry, I mentioned that about the email. I ask that all of you cast your vote this evening if you really feel that all the efforts of Tourism Department and their marketing partners will benefit vacation rentals as much as it does the hotels. Do you really think that patrons of RV parks come to Moro Bay because they saw an article about some digital publication somewhere? They don't. They book far in advance. Many of our guests and our VRs are repeat guests who book. Our booking window runs from about 70 to 120 days out on most of our vacation rentals. And so much of the promotions that happen for events and all that, or most of our properties are already booked. And just keep in mind that Moro Bay now has the highest bed tax in the county, and actually one of the highest in the state with this. And some of you have asked why we care about this, you know, since it just gets passed on to the guest, and I heard all the numbers, calculations. Here, by the way, mayor, your calculations were based on our vacation rentals being booked 365 days a year, and we could only hope for that, but they're not, so. On a per-night basis, it comes down to a lot more than that. But why we care is because it's still 3% more, and people look at the bottom line, and just like hotels were getting killed by the OTAs and everybody else, so that 3% can make a difference whether they would choose a place here, or in Cayucus, or in Cambria, or in Pismo. So we do care, even though we're not actually paying for it. I want to insert here, and don't mean to correct you, but it was, the question was asked about the 1994 bid rules, and my understanding is that's not a protest, that that is a positive vote. We're going through it right now with the TMD. You have to, it gets brought before, you don't have to approve it for five years, I mean, if you set it for five years, but the end of five years, there has to be a percentage, a majority percentage that does vote for it positively. So if this does go forward, I really am an advocate for us trying to move to those rules, because otherwise, we're just paying in perpetuity on this, with no accountability, with very little accountability. And as Scott mentioned, it is clearly stated in bid laws that business improvement district assessments must be directly proportional to the estimated benefit being received by the businesses upon which they are levied. I ask that you please do the right thing tonight and make sure that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. That's all of the speaker slips I have. Public comment is open, and Betty, welcome.
My name is Betty Winholz. I think, and I would hope that you would not feel prepared to even vote tonight, that you should continue this item, because of a lot of the issues that have been raised by the audience, by the correspondence that you received in your council tonight, or the council correspondence that was published online. I think there's a fallacy in how this came to be, and that was been articulated indirectly by a lot of people. It's coincidental that Ms. Winters spoke about the way that we went about the coming together of the mobile home ordinance back in 2003. It's very contentious, you have mobile home park owners, you have mobile park people who live there, and we brought those people together until they hammered that out. That's not what happened here. You had hoteliers who were dominating, you had RV people and VR people come and give their input, but there was no coming together, there was no compromise, there was no beating out how this would work best for everybody. And I think that's a fallacy in your process. This is not serving your business community. I think you need to go back and redo this process, so everyone can feel comfortable with what's going on. We're not all going to be winners like the mobile home ordinance wasn't, but everybody's going to feel like they got a piece. I also believe that the vacation rentals, you say you have a lid of 250, I can say in my neighborhood who's doing illegals right now, I would bet you easily there's another 100, 200 in town. So those people who are registered are going to end up paying your 3%. Those who are illegal, because you're not auditing them, are going to get away scot-free. So if you come clean and you're legal, you're going to pay. If you do it on the side and nobody knows, they're not going to have to pay. So I think that's an issue that you need to deal with before you put this in place. I also believe that the RV parks have shown you that there is very little benefit that this would contribute to them. They, you know, RVs in our town are booked up so far in advance. Camping in our coast is so in advance, whether you go to the state park, you go to some of the private places, you're not going to benefit them in getting more nights, as they've told you. And so I think, again, there's another piece that hasn't been resolved, and that needs to be addressed before you put this in place. And I want to pursue what Ms. McPherson said, you know, I don't care what the coastal wants, I don't care what our city staff wants, the people want to have vacation rentals, that ordinance settled before you do anything else. This is what's happening to us in our neighborhoods, we don't like it, and that piece needs to be settled before you start bringing in money
Thank you, Betty.
From these places, because then, once you get the money, you think you can't get rid of it.
Thank you so much. Public comment is still open, any member of the public liking, feeling like they'd like to come forward at this time, please do. Welcome.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Andy Hamp. I own Cypress RV and Mobile Home Park in Moro Bay, but also speaking for the other parks that were listed in the letter that we sent you. God, there's so much confusion out there still, from staff down to council members, I don't see I can make a decision, but anyway, let me try to help you. So, the thing that we're discussing tonight is whether RV parks will benefit from the T-Bid's destination marketing program, and the answer is no, because we haven't, and I'll tell you why. So, first of all, there's only five of us that are currently paying into TOT that would be assessed, and unlike hotels, the RV parks have high occupancy rates, which obviate the necessity and effectiveness of destination marketing. You know, we don't need it. I spoke with several of you, you wanted to know occupancy rates, I didn't have them all in my head, so this morning I did homework. I went back to 2009, I checked the first six, this is just our park now, the first six months of the year, from January to July, the occupancy was 88%. 10 years later, 2019, from January to July, that just finished, it's 89%. One percentage point difference, which is a statistical anomaly, so you can't tell me that Moro Bay's destination marketing is doing us a lot of good. It didn't do us any good, we've been full, there's no more, not completely full, but at the occupancy rate. And there's many differences, why we don't need it, we talked about only being five of us, not 40, being on Highway 1, RV-ers find us, the industry has boomed with RV sales across the nation, millions more RV-ers, all that is not driven by Moro Bay destination marketing. So the other thing is, the 14% to 14.5% difference in, or the rate disadvantage, because the state parks, private parks in county jurisdiction, it's complicated, I'll lose too many minutes to explain it, but the fact is, we're 14% behind if this goes through, and RV customers will notice the ever-increasing rate disparity and choose to take their business to non-assessed parks. We're not 100% full, there are people looking for spaces in slow seasons, and they're going to go to other parks the higher the rates are driven. The other thing, visit slow cows, destination marketing efforts are more than enough. We're paying into that TMD, they place us in RV publications, websites, directories, we're paying hundreds of thousands over the five years. We don't need more destination marketing love, we have enough. So, and then, a very important and major issue, we are outnumbered, outvoted, outstaffed by the hotels. There's five of us, 7% of the vote, compared to all the hotels, and we can't prevail. So, you are being strong-armed by the hotel industry to solve their occupancy and destination marketing problem, because the RV parks simply do not have that issue. So there's nothing equitable or fair about this situation, words that have been always talked about in the T-Bid board, and the city will be greatly disappointed with the RV TOT proceeds if we are assessed. It's not going to solve the
Thank you.
City's financial issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Public comment is still open? Anybody from the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, city staff, my name's Ian Starkey. I'm the owner of Rockstar Properties here in Moro Bay, that we manage 15 vacation rentals in the city of Moro Bay. I want to address a few items that have been brought up tonight, I also brought it up at the T-Bid meeting regarding it. As far as the taxes go and everything, as far as the judicial way of this coming about, the vacation rental owners and RV owners have not had a say in how this goes. There was one public outreach, the T-Bid members, multiple of them at the meeting, sat on the board and said, "We already have our mind pre-made up." You can watch the video of it. They verbally said they had already predetermined what they wanted to do before even hearing city input, or, you know, owners' input regarding this. They listened to us for the few minutes, they shortened the public comment time at that meeting, because of protests, they finally did lengthen it back out. But essentially, they already had their mind made up, that is how we will go if this is proceeded into T-Bid. We are far outnumbered in the percentage-wise of what we put forward into the bid, so we will essentially be giving money and not having a say in it. So I want the city council, if this is something that will be proceeded, to say, how will the vacation rental owners and RV owners be represented accordingly? I want to give a quick analogy that I think really demonstrates this perfectly. T-Bid was formed by hotel owners to benefit the hotels. It's like if you put streetlights on one side of the street because the street is dark, and everybody on that side of the street said, "Yes, let's put streetlights on the street." Now 10 years later, they look across the street and they go, "Why is nobody on that side of the street paying for our streetlights that's lighting up that side of the street?" And they want us to come pay into it now. It was something they all agreed into, to say, "Let's promote the hotels," and now they want what else is benefiting to come in. They agreed on it. So, I want them, you as a city council, just sit back and say, "How is this being determined?" The vacation rental owners and hotel owner, or vacation rental owners and RV owners are having no way of saying into it. It's not a vote saying, "Would we like to join?", it's a strong-arm saying, "We want you in this, and we're going to take the additional money." Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open, any member of the public wishing to come forward on this item, please do so. Welcome, Mr. Sedley.
Hello, mayor, city council, staff. I live in Moro Bay with my three cats, I don't charge them rent, Scott. Not coming after me, you're not going to see me on the internet. Wow. This last campaign for city council and mayor, one of the biggest issues that people wanted to talk about was vacation rentals. And here we are impacting, talking about vacation rentals again, but the subject of vacation rentals hasn't been settled. We don't know if they're going to go away, we don't know if they're going to stay at the 250 that, thanks to, thanks to the staff report. We don't know if they're going to be doubled, we don't know. But as Betty said, once you start taxing them, or assessing them, or assigning fees to them, those fees aren't likely to go away. So, no, now we have to keep them. That affects how we think about vacation rentals. I'm against making a decision on this until there's a decision on vacation rentals, which, as far as I know, all of the city council promised to deal with this subject, and it is not dealt with. A lot of us feel like vacation rentals are ruining our neighborhoods, and I'm not just talking about the 250, there's a lot of illegal vacation rentals going on our neighborhoods, and they're not participating in any way, shape, or form, but they're creating problems, and there's no code enforcement. What is going to be the code enforcement? Scott talked about reviewing the internet Scott talked about reviewing the internet and finding people that aren't paying. What about the disruptive houses? What about the houses that are too loud? What about the houses that don't pay? To me, you're signing up for a compliance code enforcement officer to monitor all this, to make sure it's all happening, unless you have staff that just don't have enough time. But I would encourage that there not be a decision made on this. Vacation rentals has not been decided. It was one of the biggest issues in the campaign, and yet it's still not decided eight months after the city council has been seated. Please consider this more carefully. I see that the owners on all sides of this are not settled in any way, shape, or form. There's not agreement. Nothing's been hammered out. Something's been trying to be hammered upon them that they're not in agreement with, and that they don't see the financial benefit for themselves. Isn't there a way to show them that there's a benefit, if there is, if there indeed is one? I'm not seeing that. And more so, the vacation rentals is not settled. Do not force a decision that starts making fees for a group that may not even exist when there is a policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Public comment is still open for item C1. Any member of the public wishing to come forward? May do so now. Looking around, giving it just a little pause. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council. And thanks to all of you who very poignantly brought your information to us. We very much appreciate it, also the pre-information that was emailed to us previously. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion. And who would like to start us off? Councilmember Davis, looks like you're making a move to your button. I'll call on you. How's that?
Yes. Thank you. And I would like to say first that I have had ex parte conversations with Andy Hamp and Maggie Durin and Doug Claussen. And I would also like to ask, as we proceed, that if we come to a motion, that we do separate motions for VRs and RVs, because I see them as two different issues. I think, first of all, that vacation rentals should come in at the full 3%. There's no doubt in my mind that they benefit equally with hotels from destination marketing. I see tourism marketing as a funnel that begins with national promotion, "Come and visit the United States." Then, it funnels down to "Visit California." And a little farther down, we have "Visit Slocal," and then within that is "Come Visit Morro Bay." Those travelers who then settle on Morro Bay seek out their preferred lodging style, whether it's a hotel or a vacation rental. And that's where they use VRBO, Airbnb, HomeAway. The destination marketer, which is T-Bid, has already driven them here. I think, though, that fairness dictates also that the vacation rental owners should have proportional representation on the T-Bid Board, representing their share of contribution to the marketing efforts. For me, the inclusion of RV parks turns on equity. The state park and Forest Service campgrounds that we have around here benefit from destination marketing, just the same as private RV parks, but they are exempt from T-Bid jurisdiction, so they don't pay. The same is true for private campgrounds that are located in unincorporated areas of the county, such as Rancho Colina, which is just outside the city limit, but essentially is a Morro Bay park. They pay no TOT, and they're exempt from T-Bid assessment. So, if we require our five Morro Bay RV parks to pay into the T-Bid to promote Morro Bay as a destination, we're asking them to pay for marketing that supports their competitors. Our city-based RV parks pay into the county marketing agency, Visit Slocal, so they are already paying for destination promotion. So I think it's not fair to put this additional tax on our local business owners when their competitors are exempt. To me, that is being unfriendly to local businesses, and that's not my vision of how we should treat our business owners.
Thank you. I was just writing your notes for what you said, so I'm sorry I missed looking at you. Councilmember Addis, would you like to go next? Since we're on this side, or? Thank you.
I'd like to echo Councilmember Davis in terms of two separate motions. My biggest concerns are around proportionality and representation, and the process for addressing needs and concerns of vacation rental owners, should they enter into the T-Bid, or should we decide that they're going to enter into the T-Bid? I appreciate the comments about the need for physical upgrades, and I think it's critical that we take a closer look at that nexus between what we can do with the T-Bid dollars and some kind of physical upgrades to the product of Morro Bay. I think we do have a lot of advertising, and it's obviously been helpful, but it resonated with me. I heard from one person in particular, and it resonated with me, that they said, "You can't keep advertising the same product without upgrading that product." And so I think that's going to be a critical piece as we move forward. And I want to thank those that came out tonight and said, "We want to be part of the process, and we want to be part of building something that's going to be beneficial, but that we need to have a voice in this." And so it's a big concern to me that, frankly, the vacation rentals don't really have a voice as it stands with the percentage that would be included. And so we need to pay close attention to how that's going to be handled. And then, lastly, the, you know, the ordinance, I do think, needs to be elevated as much as we can. I do think vacation rentals have an effect on our neighborhoods, and it's a huge concern to a lot of people and a question that we need to answer sooner than later.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Moving to my right, Councilmember McPherson.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out. And, as I mentioned earlier, I did watch the T-Bid meeting, and I did meet with Andy Hamp and Doug Claussen. And I agree with my colleagues that we need to separate the decisions. I think that they're two different animals, and we need to treat them separately. With respect to vacation rentals, I also support the T-Bid recommendation of a 3% rate, the same as the hotels and motels. And the reasons are, they clearly benefit from destination marketing. I mean, as somebody who uses VRs and hotels when I travel, I don't first pick the vacation rental and then decide, "I'm going to go there." I pick the destination and then decide where I want to stay. And it's going to depend on how long I'm going to stay. So, I think that they weren't included in the beginning, but they have clearly grown. They've, their rate of growth is faster than hotels, so at 12%, they're doing much better than hotels. And I think that the market well-bear their adding to the price of their vacation rentals. And it does level the playing field with the hotels and motels, and I think that's important. As, with respect to RV parks, I agree with my colleagues that they are different. They have a specific clientele. They don't compete directly with the hotels and the vacation rentals. And they don't have the same business model. They have short-term and long-term rentals. There's very few of them, and they clearly would be at a competitive disadvantage if we were to include them, given that they do not, I mean, their main competitors are the state parks, of which we have two RV parks in Morro Bay, and they would be cheaper. So, and by the way, I think it was also evident from the T-Bid report that there wasn't that much enthusiastic support for including the RV parks as there was for the vacation rentals. But I also agree we should expand, or change, or modify, or whatever process we use, so that we can spend the money on other things besides just marketing. Because I'm convinced that there's a point at which more marketing does not get you more people in town. So, we need to improve and make this a better place for people to come back to. So I would certainly like to see that, and I'd like to know what the next steps are. And to also say, I personally, and this is my opinion, I'm going to express it now, but I think we should address the vacation rental ordinance at the same time or before we do this, because we have been waiting four or five years for this vacation rental ordinance, and it is an issue, and people stopped me on the street to talk about it. And I just don't think we can put it off any longer. So, that's both of my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, sir.
Thank you very much. And I agree with Councilman McPherson's comments about vacation rentals. It's a thorn in the city's side. Neighborhoods are being impacted by it. I don't see why we can't start discussing and drafting an ordinance, regardless of where we are with the Coastal Commission, whatever else has to be processed through them. It's an urgent issue for our city, and nothing is more troubling to me and people who live here than what the impact that vacation rentals can have on our neighborhoods and are having. My main concern about this issue in general is that we audit the TOT, and at the very least, make sure we're getting the TOT that we deserve, and the 1% county bid number, so that we're absolutely sure that we're getting what all these various options owe us, and that is 11%. Frankly, I think I agree with the RV position, is that they're a completely different animal. They don't need more marketing. It's a completely different beast, and I don't, I don't think they should contribute or pay to this, into this. I don't think it'll be, they'll be able to be adequately represented when the board meets. The big dog in this whole thing is the hoteliers who set this up. Vacation rentals, I agree with the comments about if we start to get used to the revenue from vacation rentals, and then we decide we're going to limit them in some way, it's going to be another tough decision to make. I don't think we should collect anything from vacation rentals. We need to resolve the vacation rental ordinance first. Lastly, the 3% that hoteliers are paying now, I think we're out of line with other cities. I think we have plenty of marketing. The marketing, in some ways, has been so successful, I'm not so sure we need marketing as much as we used to. I think the hotels should be reduced to 2% to be in line with other agencies, and reduce our marketing budget. What we need is physical improvements so that our marketing efforts jive with what is really here. When I see dirty streets, and I see crosswalks that aren't painted, and we've got this great marketing campaign going on, I think a lot of people come here and are disappointed. We need, we need money for physical improvements. This is not the place to get it. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Tried to write as fast as I humanly could with that, which is not very fast, because I'm, I hope I can read my reading, writing. Thank you. Excellent input, and I appreciate always the diversity of opinion and the collegial atmosphere in which we present our thoughts. Thank you all for your robust conversation, your emails, your passionate display of your concerns and issues that have been raised. This is a very difficult issue, and I don't think it's settleable, is that a word? Look that up. Settleable, just by looking at what everybody else does. And, you know, sometimes I think benchmarking is helpful or good, but it doesn't necessarily mean one should do exactly the same thing just because the benchmarks do it. Thusly, tried to see who I agree with or disagree with, so, you know, I'll have to look at my notes. But, but in general, I heard a concept that I think is very important. And what grabbed me was Mr. Collins' slide on page 96 of the staff report during his presentation. He noted the T-Bid budgets for Pismo Beach, San Luis Obispo, Paso Robles, and Morro Bay. And that would, in essence, be the marketing budgets for the bids in those cities. And if you look at Pismo Beach, it's 2.2 million. San Luis Obispo, $1,005,000. Paso Robles, $1,001,000. And Morro Bay, currently at about $900,000. And if you look, in my opinion, at the size of those cities and the number of entities that are being represented, it's apparent to me that we're at a saturation point with regard to marketing dollars. I mean, and I, somebody said it here, and several of you may have said it differently, but you could double the destination marketing dollars spent in the city, but would you get a doubling of the return? And my sense is no, that you would not. And my sense is, as I look at these comparative numbers, not to contradict myself about benchmarking, but, but looking at the size of these cities and their budgets, we are spending a significant amount of dollars on destination marketing that is producing a return. And adding dollars to that, I don't believe brings significant value at this point. That being said, I also agree with, I think, the general comments that I heard about new ways of using assessment dollars. And I would agree wholeheartedly that you, with the concept that you shouldn't market what you don't have. And I think sometimes, and this is no blame on our department, our tourism department, our bid, or anything else, we overlook the absolute need to improve the physical attributes of this city that are extremely important to tourists. And that in itself would bring a greater return on investment than adding or throwing more dollars at marketing the destination. I, as I've sat on this council for now just about five years, have become convinced that there is a need for new revenue sources to improve the physical attributes to be identified, not just streets, but bathrooms, light poles, there are a whole number of things. Lighting, I should say, in general signage, et cetera, et cetera, that could be and should be identified, that need to be improved. And we are strapped, as you have seen with our budget report and the consideration of our CalPERS unfunded liability as a city, with trying to grapple for funds, and we have an agenda item that we'll talk about that further tonight. So, bringing it home, I don't see value in adding more destination marketing dollars for marketing the destination. I do see a value in assessing more dollars or utilizing more dollars to improve the physicality and/or the attributes that tourists want to enjoy when they're here. And that needs to be further defined. I agree with, I believe, my colleagues almost across the board that I don't see commensurate value for RV parks, as mentioned from our owners, as I see with regard to a potential competitive disadvantage that has been aired. I don't see commensurate value in significantly assessing RV parks for more dollars for destination marketing. I do think an assessment is appropriate at some level that could and should be used for exactly what I talked about previously, and that is improvement in the physical attributes of the community that themselves lend to a better perception of the tourists, and I think improve a return. I also note the marketing data. I've talked with the various individuals, park owners, previously. I apologize that I had conflicts and wasn't able to meet with you this time. However, I did read your correspondence, and basically, your position remains the same as our discussion several years ago. And I believe it to be true that you're booked out significantly, that your marketing is a different animal, and that, again, you do benefit somewhat from destination marketing, but, but your market is a different animal than we're looking at. I'm also concerned about what I would consider to be equal representation, or representation commensurate with any contribution on the T-Bid. That is important to me, that if there is an assessment, that those assessment dollars... to me, that if there is an assessment, that those assessment dollars lead to a position or a voice on the board that would be equal to the percentage contribution that one might make for that. So what do I mean by all this stuff in terms of what I've said? I support assessing vacation rentals at a level that would be equivalent to the current bid rate of 3%. I also support assessing vacation, excuse me, RV properties at a lower rate to be determined. And I think before a final decision is made on those assessments, I would entertain that we should bring back more information about improving physical attributes that would improve tourism and this destination, and potentially looking at that versus considering more money directly spent on destination marketing in general. And so I know the recommendation by staff is to initiate a process to include vacation rentals and recreational vehicle parks into the tourism or the T-bid at an assessment rate of 3%, and to have VR RVs included by early 2020. And the staff recommendation is to further recommend that the city honor contracts or rental agreements in place for VRs, RVs prior to that effective date by not adding the T-bid assessment rates to those agreements. I don't support the staff recommendation personally, and I would attempt to make a motion unless your hand is moving towards a motion. Would you like me to summarize and try to make a motion at this time? Would that be helpful?
Well, can I just?
Or would you like?
I would just like to add, because there's a couple of things I didn't mention. I also support the idea that if we include the VRs, we absolutely have to provide for adequate representation on the T-bid. That's pretty evident. And that they get the same kind of benefit from our marketing. So if it lists places of hotels or where you can find hotels, we have to have lists on there of where you can find out about vacation rentals. So they have to be advertised also equivalently. But I also think we should consider, and this is kind of what I was thinking about with respect to the RV parks, that we consider a change, I don't know if it's a change or a new bid, that would include the restaurants and service industries that service the tourist industry, and at that time, consider adding the RV parks. That's just a thought that I had, because I honestly think that if we're talking about trying to encourage tourism, and that's our number, it's the most important revenue source we have, we have to think of it holistically, and we have to think of ways that we can improve the city itself and have people want to come back here. And so it just has to be part of it. So that's what I wanted to add.
Good addition. Good addition, and I appreciate that. Do you have an emotion or a?
I have emotion.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I'd like to move, I agree with the commentary that we separate these different lodging options. I'd like to move that RV parks be excluded from the T-bid and not pay 0%.
I'll second that. So we have a motion on the floor to exclude RV parks by Councilmember Heller from consideration of a T-bid assessment. A second by Councilmember Davis, and we'll have some discussion on that. Go ahead. It's a singular motion.
Aren't they already excluded?
The continuation of, and not bring them in, I guess, is more of, is that?
It could be reworded.
Is that?
Yeah, that's the intent.
That we not add, I think, if I could restate the motion for you, that we not add an assessment to RV parks at this time. Period.
At this time?
At this time.
As part of the, I guess.
Then what did you say? I'll let you say it again.
Who knows what could happen in the future? I mean, I don't like "at this time."
Okay. What would you, why don't you restate it?
We not add RV parks to, we do not assess RV parks for a T-bid.
At this time.
I wouldn't put "at this time." Obviously, we can do things different in the future, but.
So you're saying forever?
No.
If you're not, then be more specific, I guess, in the motion. That would be helpful.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to say "at this time"?
Audience, this is a council discussion. I don't really need to hear.
Anything can change in the future. I'm not going to say it will or it won't.
Okay, so I'm going to let you make your motion, and we'll let it go. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the motion is, I'm new at this, the motion is that RV parks not be assessed T-bid.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Councilmember Heller that RV parks not be assessed T-bid. Those were your words, and we do have a second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could perhaps to clarify, at least in regards to the staff recommendation, it was to consider whether or not to initiate the process to include VRs and RVs. So one option would be to make a motion to not initiate the process, to add RVs to the T-bid. Of course, there's many other ways of wording it, but that's one idea to consider.
Appreciate that. Would you consider that as a friendly amendment?
Sure, that's fine.
Great. So we have an amended motion to not, and thank you, City Attorney, for that, to not initiate the process of adding RV parks to the T-bid. Would you second that?
And I accept that as a second.
All right. So we do have a motion by Councilmember Heller. Thank you for that, and thank you for your amended second. And I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, I just have a concern about voting on what we're not going to do rather than what we are going to do. And it seems like we could vote on initiating a process for one thing, VRs, and just leave RVs out of it altogether. I'm not clear on the need for specifically voting on what we're not going to do.
How about if I try another motion?
Well, actually, we're going to discuss that.
The reason for me is, is because it's an open issue if we don't take some action. And by not initiating that, that's an answer to the RV owners of what the intent is at this time for the council.
We could formulate a motion, though, that includes both. That suggests what we want to do positively. Do we want to initiate a process on the VRs and not initiate a process on the vacation rentals?
Okay, so let's speak to the motion, and then if it dies for an appropriate majority vote, then we'll reconsider another motion. Is there, and thank you, Councilmember Addis, for discussion on that. Did you want to speak to the motion at hand, Councilmember McPherson? That's what I was, and I think I know where you're going.
It makes it a difficult vote if you really would like to have a single motion that incorporates the recommendations from staff and suggests how we want to direct staff in the future. And if we do want to have them move forward and initiate a process on the VRs but not on the RV parks, then we could make that as a single motion instead of separate motions on this. And we could, in fact, include some other aspects to it.
So I would not support the motion for those very reasons, just to give you the bottom line of where I stand on this. I do think that it's limiting, and it doesn't address the potential issue that I have a concern about, and that is improvement of physical attributes of the community and assessment for that. And that's why I would not support it.
Right.
Did you have a comment, Councilmember Davis?
The reason I support it is, my original comment was to separate these two issues out. And for me, this clears the deck so that we can then proceed to discussion of the VRs, which is a much more nuanced situation, which I see also including the possibility of early adoption, of early consideration of an ordinance, and also talking about physical improvements to the city. So for me, this motion simply clarifies the one issue that I feel is important. It's that the RV parks should not be considered as part of the T-bid assessment.
Could I just?
Certainly.
I mean, do we have to respond to staff's recommendation, no offense, staff, but I feel like we're trying to make a motion about VRs because staff recommended that we make a motion about VRs and RVs. Sorry, we're responding to RVs because staff included RVs and VRs. But as council, can't we just respond to VRs, to vacation rentals, and just, my concern around the RV piece is there's no limit on time, and the person who made the motion wants it to be unending. I think that ties us down in a way that we might not want to be tied down in the future. And I think we can exclude RVs without making a specific motion around RVs, or maybe I'm reading that wrong.
So.
Do we have to specifically exclude RVs, or can we simply make a motion around VRs?
The council right now is considering Agenda Item C1, which is consideration of including VRs and RV parks in the T-bid assessment. So you do not have to take any action on VRs or RVs. You could take partial action. You could take complete action. This is simply seeking direction for what staff shall do moving forward, because if either VRs or RVs or both of them were to be included, and council said to do that, then we would start by noticing upcoming public hearings, you know, start putting together resolutions, you know, get the T-bid board to prepare reports and everything. And so we're seeking direction on which, if any, of those entities are to be included. So in short, you could take no action. You could just move on. Or you could take half action or directly address it. It's up to you. This is a discussion item, and direction being sought.
So I would just prefer that we take action on VRs, and if we take no action on RVs, they're just not included.
Right. There's a motion on the table, so with, it doesn't sound like there's much further discussion. I'm just going to go ahead and call the question on that, and if it fails, then we can entertain exactly what you're speaking to. So motion by Councilmember Heller to not initiate the process of adding RV parks to the T-bid assessment. Second by Councilmember Davis, and I'll go to real call.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
No.
Councilmember McPherson?
No.
Mayor Heding?
No.
Motion fails, 2-3.
Now, to your point, if you're prepared to make another specific motion concerning one of the other entities, that would be appropriate. Or if you'd like, I could, I certainly am prepared to make a motion, so which, I'm just trying to respond to your last discussion. Okay. So I would move that we initiate a process to include vacation rentals at a T-bid assessment level of 3% into the T-bid, and that we not consider at present initiating a process to add RV parks into the T-bid assessment, and that further consideration be added to determining if a RV assessment would be appropriate if staff were to bring back appropriate improvement opportunities that were identifiable improvements in tourism, physical attributes of the city, for which the contribution could be allocated to. Man, that's long, I know, but. So that's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a very lengthy motion and a second. And I'm trying to capture it all to not split it up as much as possible. We do have a motion by myself and a second by Councilmember Addis, and I know we have a lot of discussion coming on this, so go ahead.
So one of the reasons I'm not in favor of that motion is, we had talked earlier about splitting it up, which I think makes it clearer, because we have three kind of separate venue types. And that's why, at one point, it seemed like everyone agreed with that, and then all of a sudden, we didn't. So I still think we should try and have separate motions. Yours, I'm sure, is correct, but I couldn't tell you.
What I said.
Exactly what you said.
Exactly, yeah.
I think I would like to just make a motion on the initiation of the process and a separate motion on some of these other issues that have been brought up. I think it's a little too cumbersome to include it all in a single motion. So if you could end your emotion after.
Emotion?
After suggesting.
All right, I'll split it up. I can do that.
Okay, all right, and we'll work on this.
I'll rescind my first. If you'll rescind your second, I'll restate this in several pieces. That'll probably be easier. One, I would move that we initiate the process of bringing the vacation rentals into the T-bid at an assessment rate of 3%, period.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any discussion on this motion?
Sure.
Thanks.
I really think that we should not assess anything to vacation rentals until we resolve the outline of the ordinance that is so important to the city. It's going to be hard to lose that revenue if we assess it. And then, anyway, it's making things more difficult.
Gotcha.
I was going to make that motion after we pass this one.
So was I. So was I, yeah.
Well, when do we talk about the seats on the board? Is that way down the line?
I've got several motions, but we certainly.
Is that part of tonight's motions to talk about the seats on the T-bid board and how the representation will happen, or is that down the line somewhere?
Council could ask for staff to come back with amendments to the bylaws or a report, more accurately, on how the board is set up. But at the end of the day, the council has the authority to amend or change current representation.
Is that tonight, though, or after this process, say this motion passes, then after this?
The decision's not on the table tonight. It would be direction that council would provide to come back with options for altering representation of the board.
And then the same thing with how the funds are used? Is that a motion that needs to be tonight?
Yes. It would be, I'd recommend, if council's interested in both addressing representation and the potential for using assessments for infrastructure, to ask for staff to come back with staff reports on those topics, and then they get discussed at a future council meeting.
So my intent is to split them up and try to take them one at a time. And it is, would be all-inclusive, or my intent would be to make motions inclusive of everything that Chris just outlined.
But I think I'm hearing we're asking for staff reports to come back, that those are not motions that need to be made?
Yes. Yes, they would be. Well, or just ask, you're just saying, just ask?
Yeah, I mean, council could either now or at the end of the council meeting, ask for a future agenda item to include a staff report on, you know, representation and infrastructure. But council could certainly now ask for that item to be agendized at a future meeting as well.
Okay, but what you're saying is no motion could, should, a motion should not be made to ask staff to, I mean, we could make that as a motion, could we not?
Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah, that was my intent.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion on the table to add VRs at, initiate the process of adding vacation rentals into the T-bid at an assessment rate of 3%. That's, I'm just, VRs is what I'm limiting this motion to. And there was a second by Councilmember Addis, and we've had good discussion. And is there any more discussion on that, knowing the intent for additional motions to come? No? All right, we'll ask for a real call vote on that.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
So the second motion that I would make would be to not initiate the process at present to assess or bring RVs into the T-bid, but give further consideration regarding an assessment after staff brings back information on potential infrastructure improvement opportunities that might be appropriate for assessment contributions.
I'll second.
Is that, okay.
I'll second that.
Discussion on that.
Again, I think that's too much in one motion. And I don't really see the nexus of the RV parks paying for public improvements. Could you explain that to me a little bit? Could you explain that to me a little bit?
Sure, I could be a little clearer. I am convinced that the notion of commensurate representation saturation point for marketing dollars has been reached, and that competitive disadvantage would exist at present if we brought RV parks into the existing model. However, I think if we had an opportunity to improve infrastructure, and there could be an assessment opportunity in the future for that, that I would consider that once they were identified by staff.
I kind of share the same concern that Red has. I don't like tying that, and I don't think it's necessary to tie it to some future action. I think we could certainly, we may very well consider that, but we don't need to tie it in this motion. I think on this, we really want to direct staff on, we don't want to initiate a process for the RV parks. That's my take on it.
Period, or at this time?
At this time, exactly, at this time. Thank you.
Yeah, my comment is, is the same as yours, Councilman McPherson. The physical, potential for physical improvements is important, I think, to everybody here. I think it might fit better with putting it in the motel, hotel, whatever we decide there, and make this just clean, and to get.
So I sense where this is going, and that's my job, and so I will withdraw my motion.
I will withdraw mine.
And we have a withdrawal of the second, and I'll restate the motion to not initiate the process of adding RVs into the T-Bid Assessment District at this time.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Heading, Mayor Heading, and second by Councilmember Davis to not initiate the process of bringing RVs into the T-Bid.
Addis.
I mean, what did I say? I'm sorry, Addis.
Sounds the same.
Now I'm getting mixed up.
We look alike.
Gotcha, you do look alike. Second by Councilmember Addis on that. Any further discussion? Hopefully, I captured everyone's comments, okay.
Yeah, I would just like to say that this sounds a lot like the first motion that Councilman Heller presented.
Yeah, well, sometimes it takes a while to get there.
Except for the "at this time," which you rejected.
That's what the debate's about.
I would say that "at this time" is understood in any, in any action that council takes, because future councils can.
Yeah. Motion by Mayor Heading, second by Councilmember Addis, and roll call vote.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and I would move that we ask staff to bring back a plan to look at potential citywide infrastructure improvement opportunities that could improve tourism draw in the future, period.
I'll second, but I have a something.
There's a second, and then we'll open it up. So motion, motion by myself to have staff bring back information on potential infrastructure improvements for tourism, second by Councilmember Addis, and we'll open it up for discussion.
They're not necessarily citywide, though, right? They have to have a nexus with?
Opportunities, specific identified opportunities.
They can be anywhere in the city?
It is true that we're going to need to have specific findings to use any of the assessments that have been levied for infrastructure improvements, and I think we could explore that in a report that comes back, but Councilwoman's caution is warranted, insofar as we need to have clear findings that the money's being used for what the law says it can be used for, and we would need to explore more what our options would be.
And I'm not tying it to any recommendation for assessment and/or use of dollars, just a list of opportunities, so, go ahead.
And my thought is if you could just maybe come back with some examples, like the one or two that you had mentioned, that would be helpful.
Exactly.
If we need more than that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant, yeah, basically what, I agree with that, that's what I'm asking. Good. All right, we'll, roll call vote.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now, there has been a significant amount of discussion about the need to bring back the vacation rental ordinance as quickly as possible, and I believe you'd like to make a motion, so I see you reaching, and I believe I read your mind, so.
Thank you, yes. I would like to move that we delay the initiation of the VR inclusion in the T-Bid until after we address the vacation rental ordinance, and it is passed.
I second.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, hold on, and then let me, let me just be clear that I understand it. What you're saying is even though we have active vacation rentals that are operating now, that you potentially agree, or you do agree that should be part of the assessment, that you don't want to do that until we relook at the ordinance? Is that what I hear you saying?
I would like us to straighten out how many we have, and who they are, and that they're all legal, and that we have an ordinance in place before we start the process.
So we do have an ordinance in place?
Well, but it's limited to 250.
Correct.
And we don't know how many of them are actually operating, or not operating, and how many are operating illegally, and it's a process that we've talked about for four years, and I think it's as important, if not more important, than what we're addressing tonight. So I, I don't know how to get it done, so that's why I'm making this motion.
Sure.
Which I may, may not be supported, but.
That's okay.
When is, when is compliance monitoring going to start? I don't know if that's exactly what it's called, but.
I think I'll take that one. So, Councilmember Addis, we are in the process of negotiating a contract with host compliance, while we're meeting with the city attorney tomorrow to go over some, some language requests in the, in the form of, inside the contract, so that we can, you know, get into a, an executed contract with host compliance to monitor all the vacation rentals that are operating in the city legally and illegally. So I would, I would think within the next, you know, three to four weeks, we'll have an executed contract.
And once the contract starts, and we know who's legal or who's illegal, does that change, does that change this assessment, or the T-Bid, or, I mean, I guess I'm not clear on how, knowing who's operating illegally, what the nexus is with this 3%?
So, hmm. So, I mean, we'll, we'll be, we have a cap at 250, all right, and so we'll be enforcing that cap, meaning those that are licensed will be able to continue to, to be licensed and to continue to operate, those that are operating illegally will be shut down. So there's no impact on, I mean, there's, there's no impact as it relates to the, the TOT payment?
I was, that's what I was.
I'm not sure if I'm entirely understanding the question.
No, well, that's what I was trying to understand, is on the one hand, we want compliance, and want to know who's legal and who's not legal. On the other hand, we have this 3% tax that I would assume is going to be on the 250 that are permitted, irregardless of if we know who's legal, who's operating illegally.
Yeah, if we were to move down that road, yes.
If we were to move down that road.
That's correct, and we already have a motion that's been passed that we've stated and agreed to initiate the process. So I was potentially looking for a cleaner recommendation, not so much as, I think you were more encompassing, you were talking about bringing the full ordinance review that is due, as opposed to just looking at the illegal, illegally operating entities. Were you not, is it, you're looking for that ordinance to come back and be finalized by council, is?
I would like that to happen, and I have, I don't know how to make it happen. We've been working on it, you and I had a committee, and we had, we had a lot of progress, and this is over a year ago now, so I'm just trying to figure out how we can get that done. And I see them as being tied, not, you're right, not directly, but.
So.
But I, I'm willing to withdraw if you can come up with a better motion.
I would just possibly suggest that we, we could begin the initiation for what we have of the 3% assessment, which we already voted on, and that you could amend your motion to have it brought back by a date certain. The vacation rental ordinance, which, in a separate motion, without it being tied to the assessment that's already been passed, is that?
Yes.
You'd have to withdraw.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion.
And who's, I don't remember who's seconded.
Jeff did.
Would you withdraw your second? Well, if you don't, then.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so would you like to restate a motion then?
No, I'd like to ask the city manager for his input on this.
And, I'm sorry, Scott, you had something to say as well.
Yeah, I was just, I think you covered it, because you withdrew the motion, but, I mean, the question about vacation rental ordinance, I don't think we can have direction on that item tonight, because it's not what's in question, but I understand the impetus behind the question, and it's a valid one. Lots of questions about vacation rental ordinance, general policies, concerns about impacts in neighborhoods, et cetera. You know, we, we're hoping that we can adjust, at least in the short term, with the host compliance approach, which has been beneficial to other cities like Pismo Beach, for instance. Concerns about being able to execute on our goals, our work plan, you know, we, our planning department is, is being asked to look at its permit review process, it's also responsible for significant projects, as well as the General Plan Local Coastal Program. So if we want to make vacation rentals a priority, we've got to stop some of those other things that I just identified. And that's, not only what you should do, that's just a fact, because there's only one person, maybe another person in that department that's also helping with the cannabis and other extremely important projects. So just, that's, that's primarily where it is, the bottleneck, it's not putting the blame on them, but ultimately, all this has to flow through the Coastal Commission, and, you know, we're, we're pretty close to getting complete on the General Plan Local Coastal Program, which, you know, started around the same time as the vacation rental policy. So that's, that, I'm just putting it out there, but I don't know if we can take formal direction.
Yeah, I'll ask the city attorney if, if that potential motion is appropriate tonight, given the agenda item.
I, I think that the council could certainly pass a motion on, direction on when to bring something back, without having a discussion on the subject of that motion, and I think it should be clarified, though, to initiate the process to add vacation rentals to T-Bid requires a significant amount of machinery to be set into motion for noticing, public hearing, documents prepared, T-Bid Board has to, you know, provide some items to council, and so I think it needs to be clear, are you saying that we put all of that on pause until we bring back a VR ordinance?
Yes.
Or are we saying that, that?
I withdrew it. I withdrew the motion.
Okay. So the question now is just providing direction to staff on when to bring back a VR ordinance?
Correct.
Sure, you could do that either now or at the end of the meeting, but there shouldn't be discussion on the content of that ordinance, it's just simply direction to staff.
I'm not going to make a motion at this point, but I am going to make another motion at this point. I neglected to mention earlier that in reviewing for this meeting, I went back to the resolution that we passed on June 11th, 2019, related to the T-Bid, and I'm going to read this out loud to you, this is when we gave the, the city committed $60,000 to tourism operations, we, this was part of the, what we added. "The city shall support any efforts within the local business community on the formation of an additional business improvement district that could include retail and restaurant businesses for the purposes of enhanced marketing of those businesses that help make Moro Bay the destination it is." And I think I would like to direct staff to actually look at that and bring back a report on how we could do that, since we actually asked for it in June, or said it was a priority.
Chris, would that be a future agenda item, or does that item fit within the context of the agenda item here? I want to make sure I'm clear.
It, it would be a future agenda item, and I would suggest that it just simply be brought up at the end of the meeting, with direction given to staff to bring back any item you want on any date, and.
This is part of the T-Bid resolution, though, creating T-Bid.
Yeah, I mean, you can give, you can give direction at any point during the meeting to staff, you just simply can't discuss.
Right.
That direction.
Right.
So, you know, at any point in the meeting, you can just all say, hey, staff, you know, we'd like this by X date, and we formalize that on the agenda at the end of the meeting. What you can't do is have a discussion on it if it's not agendized.
Yeah, no, I was just reading what's already in the.
Yes.
So, so to be clear, maybe on where we are, I heard it across the board, I think, from every member of council about their concern regarding the need to complete the vacation rental ordinance process that was started many months ago.
Years ago.
Years ago. We agreed, tell me if I'm wrong, we've agreed that we're not tying it to the assessment that was approved for vacation rentals right now. However, the point we're at is if you would like to move, and we've heard from Mr. Collins, by the way, on prioritization, and it certainly is within the purview of council to reprioritize for staff, if that's what you want to do. Given that, Councilmember McPherson, would you like to make the motion that I thought you were going to make? Or do you have a motion, or?
I'm reluctant to make it until I have spoken with the city manager, and I can understand if there's some other way we can accomplish this in a reasonable period of time. So without having that discussion, I think I will wait and make it.
Okay. Any other members of council like to speak?
Others can make it if they'd like.
Sure.
I just have a question about the board seats. I don't think I'm clear on the T-Bid Board, if we need to say something tonight, or we, I know you already answered this. Or we wait until the VRs are in the T-Bid, and then we figure out the board?
So, my understanding with the multiple motions made is that there has not been a motion specifically voted on and approved directing staff to bring back a report on the board representation? Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to keep my own minutes here.
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct. Okay, so council could, you could propose a motion right now, Councilwoman Addis, or anyone else, that in addition to a report being back, being brought back on establishing a nexus between infrastructure and the assessments being levied, we could also bring back a report on possible amendments or modifications to the representation on the T-Bid Board, and that would require review of the bylaws and, you know, bringing forth a report on how that operates.
Is that the only way to go about it, to have staff bring a report back, or is there another way to, is there a smoother, easier way to make sure there's equal representation or equitable representation?
There might be an item tonight where you can provide that direction, too. When we look at the advisory handbook and council policies, that might be a cleaner way to, to bring that all back as a package, just another thought.
Councilmember Davis?
I'm going to move that as part of the initiation of bringing VRs in at 3%, that staff provides proportional representation for VR community on the T-Bid Board.
Second.
Well stated, very clear, there's been a second to that. Councilmember Davis, proportionate representation on the board when VRs, process of initiating be considered, at the same time seconded by Councilmember McPherson. Any further discussion? Did I capture it for you, Councilmember Addis?
Yeah, I just was trying to prevent staff having to write a whole report on this.
Right.
So if, if we can, if this motion gets it done without extra.
I think it does.
Then I'm good.
I believe, good, okay, call the question.
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
The only thing I have left on here, and unless I hear from anybody else, I'm going to drop it, is the vacation rental ordinance. Any further discussion on that, any consideration at this time? If not, so be it. Okay, we, I believe are complete now with Item C1, we have a well-deserved biofluid break, we'll be back. break, we'll be back in six minutes. Thank you. Thank you, we are back, and that brings us to agenda item C2, revenue generating measures for November 2020 general election ballot, and I will turn it over to our esteemed city manager, Mr. Collins, and our finance director, Ms. Callaway, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, Scott Collins. I'm here to bring forward an item with recommendation to proceed forward in contracting with a polling firm and a strategic firm to assess the likelihood of success for a potential revenue enhancement measure in the 2020 ballot. Before getting into the specifics of what that would look like, just wanted to provide a bit of background regarding how we got to where we are. We have been looking at a 10-year forecast, the city has been for several years, and the most updated one for fiscal year 1920 shows that without either significant expenditure reductions and/or combination with new revenues, the city will have to use and deplete its one-time reserve funds to maintain current service levels. The 10-year financial update has been provided as an attachment, the city has also adopted policies that discuss that, you know, one-time funds are appropriate for certain uses, but certainly not something to rely upon to fund deficits. Just by way of quick background, we projected that we will have a $500,000 deficit heading into next fiscal year, $630,000 deficit in '21, '22, which grows to about 1.1 in '25, '26, and 1.8 in '28, '29. Those assume that we will have no COLAs, that we'll sort of have a steady economy with no significant disruptions, and that the discount rate established by PURS will remain at 7%, even though it's sort of being forecasted down as we speak, even into the 5.9 range. What this demonstrates is that the city will have a challenge continuing to fund its existing revenues without some significant change, either in expenses or revenues. The city has taken, taken a very cost-conscious approach to managing the organization since the recession, probably even prior to, since the time the city has reduced its overall FTE count from pre-recession high of 105 FTE down to 97.13 today. Some of the eliminations include deputy city manager position, the capital projects/senior engineer position in Public Works, the harbor department has done restructuring, which eliminated a position and reduced the position to, from full-time to part-time, the building official in the community development department was eliminated, and we reorganized the utility division in Public Works, reducing the FTE count from 18 to 16, and we've also reduced hours for the fire administrative assistant, as well as the recreation office assistant. There are probably others that I missed, but those were the major ones. That's helped save the city over $500,000 in ongoing costs from the budget, maybe a bit more. In turn, the city has added some positions in fire and consolidated maintenance, primarily to keep up with service demands, again, bringing our total FTE count to 97.13. In addition to these eliminations and hour reductions, we've negotiated contractual agreements with bargaining groups, with very modest cost of living adjustments, as well as participating in cost sharing on the CalPERS side with the Police Officers Association to help reduce our long-term liabilities. We've also invested in technology to improve efficiencies, where you don't have to add staff to address the increasing responsibilities placed upon us by the federal and state governments and the, you know, the service demands in the community. The city council has adopted financial policies in the last several years related both to fiscal emergencies, new revenues, how we manage our funds to ensure that we are on a sustainable path as we can be with what we have. We've invested in economic development activity to spur economic growth through, to encourage growth in existing and new revenue sources. This includes a strategic master plan for economic development, partnering with the Chamber for low-cost economic development program, tree lighting in the downtown area, and expanded tourism marketing to key markets to increase overnight stays here. Despite these efforts, we continue to face significant challenges to maintain our status quo, the service levels that are expected of our community, whether it's emergency response, code enforcement, road maintenance, and programs to youth and seniors. Currently in this economics setting, financial setting, we are also unable to make needed investments in our core infrastructure, it was pretty much a key point of discussion in the last item. Core infrastructure includes parks, public facilities, like our restrooms, and roads. We are, we are well behind in what we need to keep up with those, those demands and needs. And failure to properly maintain our infrastructure leads to very costly emergency repairs and replacements. So with all that in mind, the city's sort of faced with a couple options to maintain current levels of service, should, you know, if we want to look at reducing current levels of service, obviously there's options there, but to maintain what we have and invest in our infrastructure, we have to look at CalPERS paydowns in whichever way we can, and then also identifying in consideration of a new revenue source. So with all that in mind, the May 28th council budget session, staff outlined several revenue enhancement options, which council whittled down to a few, which were brought back in July. Those included paid parking, paid RV parking sale, or lease of property, a sales tax measure, an assessment district for the harbor, user utility tax, parcel tax, and increases to TOT. During that discussion, staff, our council further directed staff to obtain quotes for services to explore revenue enhancement generating tax options specifically focused on a sales tax measure or harbor assessment tax. So with that, I will turn it over to Jen Callaway, who will help oversee the obtaining quotes from folks who specialize in polling.
Thank you, good evening. As the city manager discussed in July, the council asked us to go out and seek quotes on services for a lead consultant, community outreach specialist, and polling firm, and come back with kind of a concept of what that work would look like and how much that would be. So we did reach out to several firms that complete that work that we know in the industry. We had proposals from two community outreach specialists or lead consultants, as well as two polling firms. Pricewise, they're very similar, the recommendation in the staff report is to proceed with the Lou Edwards Group as our lead consultant, and FM3 is the polling firm. Those, both of those firms collaborated in the previous Measure Q ballot measure in 2006, so they have history with the city, understand the demographics and the position the city is in. Coupled with that, they're able to build off their previous data and kind of see where the pulse of the city is and where it's changed from 2006, so we thought that would be useful information as well. The Lou Edwards Group serves as the lead consultant, they'll help engage with community outreach, develop a communication plan, a strategic plan, and recommend some ongoing communication throughout the process. Should the council elect to proceed with a ballot measure, they'll stay on board and help with communication on, there's legally permissible communication the city can engage with, and they can provide advice to us on that, and help us draft that communication and those flyers and input. The FM3 is the polling consultant. What they'll do is a dual-mode voter survey, it's both online and telephone, they do a random stratified sample, so they take the full population of voters in the city, they group those into clusters to make sure all the demographics are appropriately represented, and draw samples from each of those clusters, so we get a full picture of the community. For those members that are, those members of the community that are first-time voters, all of those would be included in the possible sample, and then for those that have moved into the community, they draw that, their voting history from wherever they moved from. So they do a pretty thorough analysis to get that sample. Those that don't respond to online communications with emails, then they follow up with phone calls to try to get responses from those. It would be about a 20-minute survey, based on the previous direction, they would be surveying to get a sense of either a sales tax and/or harbor assessment tax. The harbor assessment component would just be local within Moro Bay. If you recall our previous discussion, the harbor assessment could be more of a local, regional, and include Los Osos and possibly Caycass. Given the direction we've gone at this point, it would just be a Moro Bay survey and results for that. In total, the, both contracts we would initiate starting September, the Lou Edwards Group we would plan to go through June 30th, FM3 would engage in their polling fairly soon, so we could get results back and analyze those results, and they'd likely be done by the end of the calendar year with that work. And the Lou Edwards Group is not to exceed $60,000, and FM3, the recommendation is to proceed with a contract for $24,000. There's an additional cost for mailings that would be incurred if we proceed with a measure, those range anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000, depending on if we're able to find a local firm to assist with the production of that, which we would seek out, of course. We'd come back for an amendment with those if we wanted to proceed with that in the future. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you both, appreciate that, and I'll open it up for council questions. We'd like to, Jeff, thank you.
So the harbor assessment tax, how would that work? Would that be used just for improvements of the harbor district, or what's your thinking on that?
It would essentially be like a harbor assessment district, so a tax that would be dedicated to the harbor assessment, or the harbor area.
And if a firm goes out and does polling, I mean, is there a dollar amount associated that we're going to be proposing to the residents? Because how much do we need to upgrade the harbor to the point that we want it to be at?
So that we, they don't ask specific questions, my understanding of their communication is, would you be supportive of X, Y, and Z? And then they try to narrow it down based on the answers that they get back, rather than saying off the bat, would you support a 2% assessment? They start with, would you support an assessment dedicated to the harbor? Would you support it for infrastructure? Would you support it for dedicated purposes? And then they start weaning down the answers, so the results that come back will tell us if something would be supportive, what that would be supported by the community, what that something would be, and at what rate.
So when you say what that something would be is a dollar amount, or what?
If it's a dedicated tax, for example, not just dedicated to harbor, but maybe it's infrastructure in the harbor, maybe it's broader than that. Sales tax is a better example of that, is the sales tax going to be supported if it's for a very specific purpose, or if it's for a general purpose, and that requires a different level of voting. We talked about that needing 2/3 vote if it's specific versus 50%.
Okay, and then, you know, on one of these pages, you have eight different revenue options listed, but we're only looking at two, or why are we not looking at parcel tax?
In the meeting that that was discussed, the direction was to look at sales tax and harbor assessment, that was the council direction at that time.
Okay, can parcel tax be added to the list?
The council can provide additional information, and we can certainly consult with the company on polling to see if that's viable.
Okay, so when I look at this and I think about this, the consulting firms seem fine, and I believe a consulting firm is needed for this exercise, but it seems to me, shouldn't we kind of know or have a ballpark idea of how much money we need to fix our streets over the next 10 years, how much money we need for, you know, the homelessness, or what other issues are important and that we want to fund over the next 10 years? And have a menu that is presented that weighs our balances, our expenses and our revenues so that there are options that the residents of the city can choose from. I'm just not sure that doing this, this work at this time isn't premature, till we know how much we want and need.
Yeah, so I'm going to pull up the, both firms have sent me samples of work they've done in other cities, and the questions that they ask are much broader than that, not, do you, are you aware that there's, you know, $20 million in streets work, for example, but how do you feel about the condition of the streets in Moro Bay? Do they need additional work? Would you support a tax for those? And I can pull those up and read a few, and maybe that will help clarify.
Well, I just question whether that is going to get us closer to what we need to know, it's so general. If someone asked me to, you know, are the streets okay, I would say, well, no. Do we need to pay a consultant to get those kinds of answers at this point?
That's the question that is for the policymakers, and that's the decision we're going to be making tonight, and so if you have process questions or specific questions with regard to what that would entail. Perfect, maybe Jen, you could read that list.
Yeah, so it was actually one of the community members that sent one of the prior 2006 postcards, and the ranking, it's asking to rank priority of, do you agree that there's critical city services and infrastructure that need to be maintained? Talks about replacing, at that time, the fire station, or equipping, equipping local and fire paramedics repairing storm drains, and those are ranked in priority basis, and then the survey led off with that, and spoke specifically to what items were higher prioritized items, but it didn't speak to dollar values of those items.
So will this speak to service questions as well?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I want to say is, the reporting in the staff report about our financial condition I thought was outstanding. I think this is something that we need to have on the front burner and talk about what you've done already to save money, because what I hear from people is, you know, all you, the city just always wants more money, you know, why don't they cut expenses? So I think that message that's in the staff report here needs to be delivered over and over again, in any way that you can think of, so that people understand what you've done already to this date, so just wanted to say that, that's all.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Okay, I have a few questions.
McPherson, yes.
All right. Can you, you did answer my question about some of the methodology, because I was very concerned about how they went about drawing a sample, because I know it's more difficult these days when people have cell phones, and I'm pleased to know that you're using the voter list as the population. What is the timetable for bringing the consultants on board? And do you know when this polling and surveying process would begin?
So we'd have to go through the contract process and have contracts executed, business license, insurance, so that all takes, you know, a little bit of time. So they'd likely come on, you know, early September, mid-September, we'd be able to complete that process. Our polling consultants suggesting starting as soon as possible, because then they'll be able to get results back, and the city and our lead consultants will have time to really analyze those results and utilize those results to make a decision about further outreach or any actual measures you'd want to put on the ballot.
So at what point in the process would we make a decision about whether or not we want to move forward with this?
That would be after you have polling results.
So after this first phase, and we have the polling results, and then we would make a decision about, and then we would start the campaign?
Well, I think you either start your campaign, or you maybe do community outreach or create a committee, right?
Right, right, or decide we can't do it.
Right, you'd want to have results prior to the next calendar year, so that you could use the bulk of that, at least the first half of that year, for, for community outreach, because once you establish your, you know, the campaign, then the city really is limited in what it can do, it can only put out, I mean, it's what we do anyways, is factual statements, but then you hope that there's a community group that sort of takes on the advocacy for the city.
Right, and I am somewhat familiar with what they did in 2005 for the 2006, so are we essentially talking about the very same process, the same amount of data gathering and polling, and, or?
From my understanding of what happened in 2006, similar with the exception, at this point, we don't have the pre-mailings in there that were even more general in nature. I think the Lou Group sent out two pre-mailings before the polling.
Okay, good. Good. So this amount that we're requesting is essentially for the same type of process, the same data collection?
Absent those, the data that was gained from those pre-mailings.
Right. And you mentioned a retainer. I'm assuming that in the contract itself, you would have the specific deliverables. It's not...
Correct. So their proposal provides a scope of service and what that fee covers. It includes, you know, developing informational materials. If we get to the point of a ballot measure, helping drafting that. Again, training on permissible communications that the city can have, strategic plans. We'd include all of that in the contract. The retainer is just kind of their methodology for charging, rather than hourly.
And so we assume this is sufficient to do the job, what you're requesting here?
It would run through June 30. We'd come back at that time. And if we are in fact doing a ballot measure, we may need to extend that. At that point, we can determine if we want to do mailings and how many mailings we want to do.
Okay. And you mentioned the possibility of creating an ad hoc committee. Are you talking about a council committee? Are you talking about doing that now, or at some point if we decide we're going to have a ballot measure?
I would recommend it be an ad hoc council committee to start with now.
To start with. It is correct that once, if we were to move forward with that, we could all participate on a committee to promote it. Is that correct? Maybe this is a legal question. I noticed that they had a council committee in 2005 that had four council members on it. That's why I'm asking the question.
I can't speak to what occurred in 2005, but I can say that if two council members are going to meet outside of the council meeting, that's fine. But if three or more are going to meet and publicly discuss, and discuss city business, then, you know, that's not proper. Each council member may individually, on their own time, personally support or oppose any ballot measure. But once the city has initiated the process and has sent a measure to the ballot, then it becomes a lot more strict on the use of city funds, where you cannot be advocating one way or the other. The city can simply provide information on it, so...
The city. But what about the council members? That's what I'm...
Each individual council member, on their own time, has the right to, like everybody else, to promote or oppose any political measure. But I would not suggest it'd be a good idea to have more than two council members working together on a public issue like that.
Certainly beforehand, I understand that. I was talking about after, if we were moving forward. So, no, I understand.
I would need to look at the exact contours of what's being proposed, but as a general rule, I would hesitate to think that there should ever be three council members or more operating outside of a council meeting and talking about a city issue.
All right. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
I don't have any additional questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis.
What happens with the data if it's, like, if it's a no-go? You just kind of are out that? You just find out that the polling's not really in your favor, and then you're done? Or is it, like, you save that for...
Well, I think a couple of things could happen. When the data comes back, if there doesn't seem to be general support for a measure period, because it could come back and say there's support for a general measure, meaning we only need a majority vote. It could come back and say there's support for a specific measure, if it's dedicated to roads, for example. Or it could come back and say you don't have support. I think what's interesting about using the firms that did it before is they will be able to track from 2005, '06, when they did the previous polling, because they have that data still, to this, and see where, in what markets maybe that has changed. And that would probably give us some useful information for other considerations, maybe.
And I'm sure you shared this before, about surrounding communities. I heard San Luis Obispo is currently doing polling for a sales tax.
I think every city and the county are considering a tax measure. I think the county's considering potentially a library and affordable housing. All the other cities, with the exception of Pismo, are considering a sales tax, and Pismo may consider a TOT. But that, those are all just, I think, preliminary. But City of Slow is engaged, and I think a couple other cities have engaged with polling firms.
And all of them for the upcoming 2020 election?
Yes. All for the similar issue of, you know, kind of addressing the deficits they're facing with PERS and other issues.
And similar time, all similar timeframes, the 2020 election?
Correct.
That's it.
Good. And thank you again for the staff report. Just a couple of additional questions. I was, the recommendation from staff is to enter into both agreements now. It sounds like one is for polling. The other would be, if the polling is positive, then the LED group would then come in and do the campaign. Would we not do the polling first and then consider an agreement with LED? Or are they complementary? Maybe you could just explain that to me.
Yeah. LED is your lead strategist, so they're on board in the beginning, and they work with, if there's an ad hoc council committee or not, or they just work directly with staff, and the polling firm to develop the questions. And then, depending on what comes back from that polling, either part ways, or if there's, seems to be some level of support, and council determines that it's worthwhile to continue, then they would continue to support us in the strategic role.
So it seems like initially, the 24K would have to be spent in order to do the polling to determine if you were going to go forward. And then some portion of the LED contract would be expended during that determination period. So the initial exposure to the point where we get to a no-go or go point might be in the range, I'm just on top of my head, of thinking about $30,000, $35,000?
That's about right.
Is that close? I'm just trying to see what the exposure would be.
Yeah. That seems about $30,000 to $40,000, depending on how long it takes to get the poll out and results back.
And then we would have an out for LED if it looked overwhelmingly no support, basically?
Of course.
Okay. Great. And, let's see, and these entities were the same exact entities, both that worked for the city in 2005 on Measure Q. And I noticed they both have a 95% success rate. Is that a real number? Did I, I mean, it's phenomenal in terms of, is that in predicting or actually achieving the results, or what?
Based on the literature they provided, 95% success rate in measures being passed.
Wow.
So those are measures that are actually put forward? That doesn't include those that pull back after polling shows no support?
Right. Well, and the interesting part was, when I looked at the polling, 95%, I guess their polling would indicate that there'd be support, and then as you went through the process, and at the end of the day, their track record is 95% also, based upon their initial polling. I was trying to understand that. Good. Okay. That's a, man, I wish I could invest like that, guaranteed rate of return. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up to public comment. Public comment is open for Agenda Item C-2. Any members of the public wishing to come forward at this time, please do. Welcome back, Betty.
Betty Winholz, it's surprising to me that you would even consider this at this time, spending almost $100,000 from our reserves to find out that the community will not support this kind of a measure, after you just gave us $200 sewer and water bills. So it's a very different time than it was back in 2002. We had not hit the recession. We were building a fire station. We were supportive, trying to work on our infrastructure. And this is a different time. People are fighting to meet ends, to make the meet for their families and for themselves. And if you don't already know that, then you're pretty out of touch with the community. So I'm not sure you need to spend $100,000 to find that out.
Thank you. Public comment is open for Agenda Item C-2. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome back, Mr. Sedley.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dan Sedley of Morro Bay. In a previous lifetime, or during my career, 30 years working for the state of California, I spent many years as a correctional administrator for the Department of Corrections. And I can remember far more poor years than rich years, specifically pertaining to whether we had to make cuts, or whether we got a little bit extra. And it was normal practice that we would go through five, 10, every department head would be given an assignment to make 5%, 10% cuts to their department. And then they would outline, what would that do to your department? What services could you still provide? What couldn't you do? How drastic would it would be? And then the chief, the person in charge would say, yeah, we can deal with that lesser service. We can deal with that. Other departments said, no, no, you're already stripped to the bone. We can't make it there. But from the governor's office, it would come down, you will make 5% overall for this entire group. And those decisions would be made. And, yeah, lots of times, you're not going to provide the same level of service, and you have to decide where is the least harm? Where is the least harm? You've just heard that people are hurting because their water and sewer rates have doubled and tripled. Their paychecks didn't double and triple. How are they supposed to handle that? Where is the empathy? Where is the concern? They're looking for help. Their pay is not following suit. It's good that the city is negotiating with the collective bargaining units to say, you know what? You have an awesome pension. Most people these days don't even have a pension. We need your help to help pay for that pension. We need, most people, a lot of people don't have health insurance. We need your help more to help pay for your health insurance. Or we're going to have to increase deductibles, or we're going to have to look at getting into pools of insurance. And all the different kinds of ideas to do things more efficiently. Rarely in the state did we get just bundles of money handed to us, because this is originally here. Here you go. It was the 5%, 10% cut. You're a department head. Make those cuts. The head will look at it and decide if it's too much. If you've outlined the reasons why it will kill your department, then perhaps you get a break, and you don't have to make any. But over here, Dan's area, we're just going to have to cut the heck out of it, because we can deal with that. People are not in a position to deal with tax increases. They're still grappling with the mugging they've taken on the water and sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Public comment is still open for Agenda Item C-2. Any other members of the public seeing none? I'll bring it back to council for discussion. We, or I should say, staff is looking for direction on moving forward with initiating the consultant agreements, and then secondarily, a consideration for an ad hoc committee. So perhaps in your discussion, you might consider both. And if we end up with motions, then I would consider those probably as separate motions. So...
Mayor, can I interrupt?
Yes.
The 9:30 time?
You can interrupt the 9:30 time.
Do you want to extend?
Yes, you can.
Are you going to complete in three minutes?
I make a motion, we go past 9:30. Time uncertain.
Second. Motion by Councilmember McPherson to exceed the limit established by council of 9:30 p.m. with no limit, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion?
It hurts me to do it.
With pain, roll call vote.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Indeed, yes.
Motion carries by both.
Thank you for watching the watch. I appreciate that. So I'll open up discussion on Item C-2. Who'd like to lead us off?
I'll start, just a couple of quick comments.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. You bet.
I like the direction this is going. I think it's something we need to do. I'd like to add parcel tax to the list of the two items that are going to be investigated.
I also support this. I think the reason that we did not include a parcel tax, when we discussed it earlier, we said the sales tax is paid for, but with tourists and residents. Parcel tax, just residents. And since, you know, the services of the city also benefit tourists, we want to make sure that the tourists contribute to this. So that was the rationale for not a parcel tax at this point. So just to let you know.
Okay. So in response to that, I'm not saying we shouldn't do a sales tax, but I think a lot of the, a lot of our infrastructure needs really should be borne by property owners, in my opinion, as opposed to visitors.
Okay.
So I think we should look at all three.
Okay. And I, so I do support this. I think we absolutely have to do it, and we have to make this investment to find out if the community can accept this. And one of the things that I learned about the 2005 process is that they actually monitor during the process, depending on your communications and what's going on in the community. And you do have to have a community group that supports it. So I think we can learn a lot from them that will help us. And every city is doing it, so I honestly think we have to do it also.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
I agree with both Councilmember Heller and Councilmember McPherson. I really appreciate the staff has been able to bring forward consultants who have experience here in the city, and who also have 95% success rate. I think that's great staff work, and I really appreciate that. And I would volunteer to serve on the ad hoc committee if my fellow council members would vote for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
I'm also in support and appreciate the work done by staff to bring this forward. And generally, I'm not interested in a race to the bottom by continuing to cut farther and farther and farther. I don't think that's the way we're going to get out of the issues that we're facing. And so I think this is extremely necessary to take a look at and to at least get a pulse of the community to see what we can do. And I believe that it wasn't just the taxes paid for by residents and tourists, but mostly by visitors. If I, do I remember that correctly?
Sorry. I shouldn't have added that we are in the process of getting that analysis of how much money is generated by tourists. We hope to have that by mid-September, September 19-ish. Our consultant that did the similar work for Slow to derive their numbers that's been referenced is working on that for us now.
But I think you did mention that in Slow, they had determined it was approximately 70%? Was that...
It was 72%.
72.
And they have tourists, but they also have major shopping centers like Costco that pull in from the county.
Gotcha. Okay. Yes. So thank you for that. I agree with what has been said. I will indicate, you know, my two issues are magnitude and urgency with regard to our budget. We're in serious financial difficulty. I know we know that. Thank you, Councilmember Heller, for recognizing, I think, the well-written report that staff did in outlining the issues for us. They're huge. If you look at the 10-year plan, it is, I believe, understating, not on purpose, but because we don't know actual numbers, really the magnitude of the issue, and it's probably much greater than we currently think it may well be. Therefore, I believe this would satisfy my two criteria of an incremental increase in revenues, potentially, if the community could agree to it, of a large magnitude, but also satisfying the urgency need, whereas economic development and other issues will take time to produce results. So with that, I would move that we authorize the city manager to enter into consulting agreements with both a lead consulting firm and public opinion research agency to conduct polling for a sales tax revenue measure and/or harbor assessment ballot measure for consideration during November 2020 general election, with appropriate budget adjustments from the general fund emergency reserves, specifically utilizing the companies mentioned in the staff report.
Second.
You have a tie. Motion by Mayor Heding for staff report recommendation number one, seconded by Madam Clerk, okay, Councilmember McPherson. Okay, Councilmember McPherson. With that, any further discussion?
Can we do a friendly amendment?
Yeah. I might just say that the parcel tax really is -- harbor assessment district would, in essence, most likely be that, if that were acceptable.
But it would be specifically for the harbor.
That is correct. And if you'll note in the staff report, we, as a council, back in -- I have to get myself to the right page here. May of 2018, at the study session, outlined a series of revenue options. July 2019, staff returned to council with more detailed analysis. During the discussion, council directed staff to obtain quotes for services to explore revenue generating tax options specifically focused on sales tax and harbor assessment tax period. So that was the --
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to amend it, because it seems the parcel tax is a potential source of significant revenue.
Right.
And we need it.
Yeah. So I didn't support it at that time specifically, and I still won't support it now. My motion stays the same.
I just wanted to add that when we get into a discussion about the questions that we ask people, we might certainly ask them about infrastructure improvements, and is that a priority? And we can mention specific ones. So we can certainly get at the issue of, can we fund infrastructure with the sales tax? So I think we can accomplish that without changing the motion.
Further discussion? Okay. Not roll call vote.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Heller?
No.
Motion carries 4-1.
And my second motion would be to establish an ad hoc -- did you want to make that motion? Go ahead. I didn't know if you were motioning. I was just trying to move things along.
Yes. All right. I'll make the motion that we establish a council ad hoc committee to help in the beginning process here.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember McPherson.
So can we discuss this?
Yeah, certainly will, as soon as I get the motion on the table.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Motion by Councilmember McPherson to establish a subcommittee, and seconded by Councilmember Davis. Discussion. Thank you, Jeff. No, no worries.
So a council ad hoc committee is members of the council only? Is that --
Correct.
With a council?
That's the motion, and it would be limited to two, because otherwise, three would be a Brown Act violation. So would be limited to two.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
Just to clarify, I mean, at some point, there would probably, there would be a need for a community committee, and I think this council ad hoc committee could make recommendations to the full council about creation of one of those. This is just to help staff right out of the gate, right? I mean, I think it's important to have council perspective.
And so motion for the establishment of the committee, and a second, roll call vote?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And Mr. City Manager, are you looking for volunteers now? Would that be helpful, or is that a separate motion we would need to be appointed? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. If you all want to appoint two of the members of the council, then I'd suggest you discuss and vote on appointing them tonight. I recall Councilmember Davis volunteered earlier, and so I guess we would need another volunteer and then a motion.
I would volunteer.
I was going to volunteer also, so now we have a three-way
Three-way volunteer.
Race going here.
That's a good vote, then.
That's a good vote.
Well, my interest is in, really, in the polling and the survey design, which is what I did in my job.
Absolutely.
So I would like to help with that, even if I'm not on the subcommittee. I don't know if I can without being on it or being on the ad hoc committee.
I'm fine. I don't have to be on everything, so I'm more than happy to support the two of you capable individuals, unless somebody else was interested. I didn't see anybody jumping up. All right. So I would move that we appoint Councilmember McPherson and Davis to the ad hoc committee for this issue.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Heding to appoint Councilmember McPherson and Davis, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. And thank you again for the staff report. Thank you, Jen, for all your work with obtaining these consultants as well. That brings us to item C-3. This is a review and discussion of the city council policies and procedures, Advisory Bodies Handbook and Bylaws. We did have an extensive review, a little over a year ago, on the whole of this, but there were a couple of items that were brought up in previous meetings and by some of the advisory bodies that we decided to look at and consider, and that's why the staff item is with us. So with that, I'll turn it over to our city manager to explain further. Oh, our city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Says city manager, but that's okay.
I think you just did the perfect lead-in, but this item is brought forward to address future agenda items established by the city council regarding consideration of Finance Committee Chair Spagnola's suggestions regarding advisory body selection process, to take a broad look at advisory body roles and responsibilities and provide clarifications as needed, and to review the policies related to a council member's ability to submit letters of support to state and federal representatives regarding legislative items of interest on behalf of the city. Staff recommends the council discuss these items and provide direction regarding next steps, which could include crafting policy revisions tonight for adoption at a future meeting, or directing staff to review and bring back recommended policy revisions, or establishing a council subcommittee to work with staff to develop policy language for full council consideration at a future meeting. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Let me open it up first for any questions from council on item C-3. Looking to my right, seeing none. Looking to my left, seeing none. I'll open it up for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to address item C-3, please do so at this time. Seeing nobody in the audience willing to come forward or wanting to come forward, I'll close public comment and bring it back. Maybe I can make it easy. I did an extensive review of all of the areas of the, both the Advisory Body Handbook bylaws, as well as the council policies and procedures, with my filter being specifically the issues that have been raised by council, including the policies on recruitment procedures, roles and responsibilities in meeting frequency, the city council policies and procedures regarding letters of support on legislative items of interest, and then other policies as deemed appropriate by the majority of council. And my filter there was there had been some discussion, and then I found in our Advisory Body Handbook that there would be a review by CFAC in 2019 of council member, I'll call it, support or council member salaries. And that had been mentioned previously, but there is an improved item that exists, and I could pull the page if you want me to, that does say that the CFAC is going to be asked every eight years, beginning in 2019, to review council member remuneration or salaries. So those were my filters. With that, let me refer you, if you'd like, to the sections that I found that I think meet all of the criteria of areas that need to be reviewed, unless you want to go page by page through each of these. I'll be happy to tell you that on page one, this is the Advisory Body Handbook and Bylaws, page 116 of the staff report speaks to time to serve with regard to that, and that is specifically mentioned. Page 118, section 3.3 specifically refers to the advisory body work plans, and part of the issue we've discussed in the past has been the quantity of work, and every year we're supposed to review each of the subcommittee's workload. So that's the area that addresses that. Page 119, section 5 and 6 refers to advisory staff, excuse me, advisory body and staff relationships in terms of how staff members interact with advisory bodies. That was one of the filters that we looked at, or were asked to look at, page 115, I'll go back, I'm sorry, B, addresses Mrs. Spagnola's request to have the magnitude of time required on subcommittees. So that speaks to that issue. Page 123, section 5 speaks to the chair responsibilities in terms of providing the advisory body with direction and setting the tone for meetings, and speaks specifically to their role and their responsibilities with regard to interaction with staff as well. So that was linked to the other issue. And then on the council policies, beginning on page 168 of the staff report, let me just get there very quickly, that speaks to placing an item on the agenda by a council member. I think we've had some concern about exactly how we go about that, what qualifies, and so page 168 and 169, 1.22 and 1.3 address that and would be appropriate to review. Page 184 speaks to exactly what I said about the requirement that council passed. If you look at 2.1 on page 184, says compensation for services rendered by the mayor and council member in an official capacity shall be provided in accordance with state law and our municipal code. The CFAC will be asked every eight years, starting with 2019, to provide the council a recommendation on whether any changes should be made. And so I only included that because specifically, we've mandated that that occur. Page 190, section 3.15 refers to the mayor's written communications, specifically with regard to the League of Cities, and addresses some of the issues raised about the appropriateness and the opportunities or abilities to write communications without agendizing it at the council level, and what authority the mayor or council members have in doing that on issues. That section was that. Page number 193, section 3.10 refers to legislative action program, speaks to the same issue as I just mentioned, another portion to be addressed and looked at with regard to that. Page number 201 of the staff report, get there. 5.22 is direction to staff by mayor and council members. In reviewing this, I found it to be vague and unclear, and I know at times, staff has mentioned issues with regard to not only advisory body requests for information, but at times, council requests for information. And so I included that as an area to review. Page number 202, section 5.32, direction from council in terms of specifically what the council is empowered to do with regard to any mandates for staff to perform duties or responsibilities either for them on issues or not. Part of that same review related to the last item. Page number 203, section 5.35 speaks to significant information, service-related needs or policy positions perceived as necessary by the mayor or individual council members, which can't be fulfilled, blah, blah, blah. It speaks again to those issues I think the council member Addis had brought up and others with regard to what we can and can't write letters to. So that section would be included. And then page, I only have two more, page 206, section 6.4 speaks directly to the role of city staff persons with regard to support provided to advisory body members and council. And then page 207, the last part, 6.5, 6.63, so 6.5 to 6.63 speaks directly to the appointment procedures that Ms. Spagnola had raised with regard to advisory bodies' terms, and then replacement individuals who may have been already interviewed as possibilities, et cetera. So I tried to look through it with somewhat of a jaundiced eye on what we had been directed to do without asking whoever is going to do this to review everything again that has been reviewed previously. So with that, if you're comfortable, I would make a motion to recommend that the city council review and discuss the policies as mentioned or outlined by myself, and establish a subcommittee to perform an in-depth review of the items noted. Period.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. I tried to make it easy, but certainly I'm open to any of your individual comments at this time on other sections. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second to look at the areas as outlined, and then I would probably entertain a motion for volunteers.
And I do have a couple of other issues
Sure.
that I would like to add. I don't know if now is the appropriate time or to the motion or after the motion.
We could move the motion and then add the items, or we could do a friendly amendment if there were a couple of sections you wanted to look at.
Well, let me just tell you, I think some of them you covered. The handbook does talk about how advisory board members should communicate with the council, but there's a misunderstanding in the advisory boards on how to do that. So just clarifying the way we expect them to communicate back and forth.
Perfect. That was included in the sections that I outlined specifically.
Good, good. And then to clarify what kinds of changes an advisory body can make on its own procedures without council approval. One advisory board just changed the time of their meetings, and I'm just wondering if they can just do that, or if changes to their procedures or to their meeting times or their dates should be brought to council for?
That is specifically in one of the sections.
Is it? Okay. All right. Good.
If I can find it, I will cite it for you, but trust me, it's there.
All right. Well, I have it if it's not.
It's there. And if not, that certainly could be added, but I believe it is there.
And then, a related issue, should advisory board members be able to recommend future agenda items for their group without council approval if the item is not included on their annual work plan, since it essentially commits staff to taking time that if, I think the council should say, yes, this is a priority, and yes. So, because they routinely do put on future agenda items, which commits staff to. So it's another issue to talk about. And then there's just a number of little niggly inconsistencies in language that could be changed. One place, it says 120 hours that the agenda is published, and another place, it says 72. So.
So I would amend my motion to include the areas that I cited, and then to be sure we review the areas and that they are inclusive of the areas that you just have outlined.
Thank you.
Would you amend your second on that?
Yes. Yes, I do. I amend my second on that.
Is that clear, Madam Clerk? All right. So we do have a motion. Any further discussion?
I really appreciate the time you two have taken to go through this. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. I figured it might be a late meeting, so, yeah. Happy to do it. Good. Any further discussion? Not?
I'd like to thank you also.
Ben, thank you.
I'm impressed that you went through it in such great detail, and I appreciate you doing that. The, having been a former member of an advisory committee, I think there are a couple of things that are really important whoever ends up doing the review. One is, we need to think about reducing the demands on staff, excuse me, the demands on staff with the various committees that we have and how long they take and making them all Brown Act bodies and so forth. I think it's enormously time-consuming and not really necessary, to be frank. And the other thing I'd like whoever takes this on to look at is, there seems to be a tendency to appoint people to committees who agree with the council's position on many things. I know that there have been at least three or four occasions where the most qualified person has not been selected to be on the committee because they disagreed with the current thinking on one project or one issue or another. And I think we've got to have diverse, really represent the community and have diverse opinions on these committees. So based on who's the most qualified to be on them. So now that you've done the beginning work, you can carry on and finish all that.
Thank you.
I would add frequency of meetings is an issue that I think we were asked to look at because when we talked about public participation, we looked at how much time is spent by staff in getting ready for these meetings and conducting the meetings. And we should look at how frequently they actually do need to meet to accomplish what we need them to do.
Thank you. And there's one general section that does speak to that, frequency of meetings. And then there's more within each of the subcommittees or the committees, I should say, advisory bodies about it as well. But, yeah.
Would the subcommittee be making suggestions on council pay or making suggestions on CFAC making recommendations on council pay? Like, there's something in there about it's going to go in front of CFAC. And I'm wondering on, that's one example. Another example would be on the legislative action, is the subcommittee making recommendations on what happens or?
So to answer your first question, I only caught that because I read the whole thing and noted that we have already made that decision and asked every eight years for CFAC to look at this, beginning in 2019. So I was reminded that that was a decision that was made, is in the handbook and should be reviewed. So what I would expect the subcommittee would be doing with all of this would be looking at it in detail, coming back with recommended changes to council for any of the areas that we've outlined that need to be looked at. But right now, there is a, within the policies for the council, there is on page 184 of the staff report, section 2.1, a requirement that in 2019, that CFAC review council salaries. I'm just, just what I read.
I guess I'm asking, well, I think council pay is an important issue from the point of view of getting more working people on council. And so I'm wondering if, it sounds to me like it's in the hands of CFAC to decide what council pay is, and I'm wondering if the subcommittee?
No, it's not. It's in the hands of CFAC to review and make recommendations to the council. That's currently what the policy says. My recommendation is, since it has been brought up previously and there's an existing mandate that before that happens, it be part of this review as to where that occurs and how that occurs and if that occurs. But right now, it should occur based upon previous decisions and an existing policy that exists.
There's no information on what they would be reviewing. Like, for instance, I think San Luis Obispo did, you know, San Luis Obispo, I think it's looking at doing a study.
Yeah, and we're getting into discussion on details of the review, and so I won't go there.
Right.
But I'll just leave it at, this is part of the review that should be done by this group and before the 2019 process starts, if we make it part of this review, that recommendation could be changed. Mr. Attorney, am I okay? I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm okay with that.
Yes, we can absolutely have this be a part of a future review. If the council wants to consider compensation issues, that could be agendized later.
Well, again, what I'm saying is, it's in our policy manual, it's supposed to happen. I'm making it suggesting, and there's been a second, that it be part of this review, the process be a part of this review.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's other things like that, too. We're supposed to be having a joint meeting with the planning commission twice a year. So that's another thing that we should look at and see whether or not we want to have, continue to have that in there.
Diana, one of those sections incorporates that, too, because I caught the things we weren't doing as well.
Right.
So to be clear, for the review, I imagine staff would be going through with the council subcommittee. There were specific sections that were itemized by the mayor and Councilwoman McPherson, but if we're going to be looking at in general also some other items, you might want to consider having a broader mandate provided for review.
Well, I think that we amended the motion to include those items that were mentioned by various people.
Oh, I mean, right now, as you're talking about, there might be some obligations like meeting with commission that was just mentioned and so on.
Yeah. I did say any inconsistencies that occur in the, and that would be an inconsistency if we're not abiding by it. So I think that covers it.
Are we good?
Okay.
Motion and a second, and then with no further discussion, roll call vote.
Mayor Heding.
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
Councilmember Addis.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Great. That brings us to council declaration of future agenda items, hopefully, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me of that. Item C3, I'm sorry, we're back on that. Looking for recommendation to appoint a subcommittee.
I volunteer.
We need a motion first to?
I move that we appoint Mayor Heding and Councilmember McPherson to the subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, well, I know how I'm going to vote on that. So we have motion and a second to appoint Councilmembers McPherson and Heding to the detailed review of very lengthy materials and manuals. Any discussion? Rule call vote?
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Congratulations, yes.
Councilmember Addis.
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
And Mayor Heding.
Reluctantly, sure. Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you for that reminder. I appreciate that. Now, where did I go? Okay. That does bring us to future agenda items. Let me remind you of, all of you should have received the extensive list of pending items that we have before us and just asking you to consider that with regard to staff capacity as you make suggestions for future agenda items. Not that you should hold back if you think they're important, but just note, there's a lot there.
And I almost never do this. I think this will be the first time that I'm suggesting a future agenda item, because I really don't think we should be doing too much extra over and above the goals and objectives that we've set for the year. But I would like to recommend that we direct staff to bring back a report on the process and costs of how a vacation rental ordinance could be enacted by December 31, 2019 for the next available council meeting.
Second.
Head nod or questions?
They're asking for a report on?
On how we can accomplish it by December 31.
Which means that it would have to be agendized and prioritized well above a number of items, as I said, that are prioritized now.
This is just bringing back a report on how it could be accomplished and what it would cost, what the process would look like and what it would cost to do.
Sure. If I could, just in terms of the deadline that is being suggested to staff for the staff report, consider that, I would think we would need to have at least three meetings, council meetings, because we're going to have to have a report, a first reading, a second reading, and there's only two council meetings in November and December. So it would probably be an ambitious, a very ambitious schedule to, I mean, I could say right now in terms of setting a deadline, to have it done by the end of the year would probably be very ambitious. So I anticipate the staff.
Six council meetings, correct?
Yes. I'm just saying that in terms of the deadline for staff, it's very ambitious to have it enacted by the end of the year.
And she was asking for a report on?
Sure.
A process, I believe, not to have it enacted.
Initially, all right. I can take out the date that it would have to be enacted by.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So, a report on how it would be enacted and a timeline for when it could be accomplished.
That's different than actually doing it, so I was just trying to make that clarification. Thank you. Is everybody okay? Does that see head nods? Okay, so I have a no here. So the agenda request is to bring back a report that would outline the process and a timeline for completing the revision of the vacation rental policy ordinance review.
I would like to generally know the timeline. I don't really want to ask staff to write a report on this.
I just don't want to rush into the ordinance because it's going to, it's going to take a lot of community input and outreach. And I just, I think it's too much to ask of our staff right now. I agree with you that we should do it, but I don't think we can. We have an ordinance in place and I think we just have to live with it because of capacity.
Well, I'm thinking that it's such a priority, and it's been a priority now for five years. And the most recent promise was that it would be in place by December 31, 2019. That was not that many months ago, that was the commitment and the promise. And I believe, I am, not a day goes by that somebody doesn't mention this to me. And so to me, it's a priority, and I don't know how to make it a priority unless perhaps it will take hiring a consultant to do some of this work. So, and I'm prepared to spend that money. Yeah, I know you aren't, but I am.
No, I didn't say. I'm not, I'm just.
Red was shaking his head.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see Red.
At any rate, that's my reasoning. I would, I just want to get it done. We went so far along about a year ago where we actually had community meetings and the planning commission met and discussed it, and we brought people out and we got them all excited about an ordinance, and then we dropped it. And then now people ask me, when are you going to pick it up? When are you going to, we've waited, you keep promising. And so I just, I'm trying to make it happen. And that this is my way of.
Perhaps the easier route and the limited time that would be imposed upon staff would be to just ask for an update on the completion of the vacation rental ordinance review and when staff thinks the process can be completed, is that?
If we, Scott, help me. If we proceed along current pathway, it will be this time next year. And I'll, you know, just to be completely frank, we don't do anything different. If you want to prioritize it, you're going to have to have a consultant run the process. You can't, you still won't get it through coastal commission until you complete your local coastal program and zoning code, they won't look at it. So it won't be enacted, it won't be in place, but you can complete, the city can complete its process probably in six months or thereabouts. But I, we will not be able to execute it as staff. We don't have the capacity. We can't stop doing things we've already set in motion. So that's sort of what we would recommend. And I think, Councilmember McPherson is asking what that would look like, what are the specifics. Plan Director Scott Graham could put that together pretty quickly just to demonstrate what that would cost in such a way where staff really wouldn't be running a process, sort of like with the vacation rental outreach that was done. We attended meetings, but it wasn't, wasn't staff-led and staff-run, you know? So that, we could accomplish that by the next couple of meetings, bring that back.
Well, I think I kind of agree with you, Mayor, that an update would be appropriate, in my opinion, at the next meeting, because I think there's some confusion, certainly on my part and perhaps with Councilman Addis's part in terms of where we are. It sounds like we were very close.
We were very close, very close.
So I'd like to know more about exactly where we are, and I'd like to know at the next meeting. And then I'd like to know options to move this forward. A year from now is unacceptable to me. Six months is unacceptable. It's more important than cannabis, it's more important than just about everything else that you have on your plate, in my opinion. To agree with what you say, every time I go to the grocery store, somebody stops me. And it's been four years, five years, other cities have completed this. I don't care if the coastal commission is in a position to approve it in that timeline, but we need to put it together and tell the residents who live here, this is the ordinance, and it's in the coastal commission's court before we can enforce it. And we need to bake it on the front burner. I just, I don't see any reason, I just can't buy any more excuses.
So I'm, what I'm hearing support for as a future agenda item is to bring back a detailed report on where we are and what it takes to complete the vacation rental ordinance. And we can look at that and make decisions on it based upon that information.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for a whole new staff report.
Right, exactly.
You've got the information gathered up, explained to us, and let's move forward.
Yeah, it'd be the pathway of stopping everything we're doing now in having staff.
Stopping everything?
If you want us to stop everything we're doing now, we can, and take this up.
If that's your opinion, then bring it to us at the next meeting.
Or we can hire somebody else to do it for us. That's your options. And so we can bring the staff report back that shows that.
So maybe I wasn't clear, Scott, and I'm not really trying to be adversarial in any way. I think what we're looking for is an update on what the go-forward process would be to most expeditiously get us to completion and realizing that that may involve external, use of external consultants, if there's a cost associated with that. If you can't do it internally, then that's part of the report. Am I articulating what?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I mean, I don't want to really know what a consultant's going to cost at this point, given the purse issue and the looming city budget issue and the, I mean, we just heard a report that said we're going to have a half million dollar deficit, I think, next year. Is that generally what I heard, right? So, I mean, I don't, I don't see spending money to get another vacation rental ordinance finished. I think we have a vacation rental ordinance that was put in place as an emergency ordinance, and we want a permanent ordinance. And I absolutely understand the urgency and I'm very sensitive to, you know, you only like vacation rentals if you stay in them or you own one. If you have to live next door to them, you don't like them. I'm very sensitive to that issue, but I don't see spending money on a consultant and therefore I don't see bringing a report back that says the only way to get this done on a timeline is to spend money on a consultant. I am interested in generally knowing the timeline, but I'm hearing staff clearly say, even if we do something, coastal isn't going to approve it within the time we want it done anyway. So I don't see, it feels to me like we're kind of, I get the urgency, but I don't really want to use staff time or a consultant to get this done.
Let me, we're getting into discussion and decisions, which we're really not going to do. We're talking about a future agenda item, and to be clear, let me just try to restate it simply. An update on the planned process to complete the vacation rental ordinance according to your existing plan, and if there are opportunities to expedite that, just a notation without specifics about what that would involve. And if it would involve a consultant, that would be said, and then we could discuss at that time. that time if that would be appropriate or not. What I'm hearing is, is that you want to know where we are and where we're going, and none of us know that, other than that it's going to happen when we complete our general plan and it's going to be a year from now. That's basically my understanding of what we've been told.
For me, I'm just, for me, that's sufficient. I hear it clearly.
Okay, so you don't support the agenda item? That's fine.
That's right.
Okay, so.
Okay. I support it.
So I support it.
All right.
Thanks. So we've got that. Any other future agenda items?
We've been bulldozed.
No, no, no.
We've been bulldozed.
Any other?
I just have a question about it.
Yes, sure, absolutely.
On council pay. So if CFAC is supposed to look at council pay and make a recommendation, does that mean it's a future agenda item already?
Should we cut the mics now or?
All I did was look at, obviously, I read the whole thing. So right now, the way the policy reads, they're supposed to do it. And I'm suggesting that this review include it and so that it not happen until a re-review of this policy.
So it is or it is not, it would or would not be a future agenda item already as the policy is written?
Chris, help me.
The city council can take action on prospective council pay adjustments at any time. There have been a lot of rules that have been implemented by Sacramento in the last few years on when the salary changes would take effect and the procedures you have to go through, et cetera, et cetera. But whether or not CFAC makes a recommendation or not, council can agendize this anytime it chooses to. Council's not bound by CFAC's recommendation. It can accept it, it can ignore it, it can amend it, or it can make it a separate agenda item to consider council compensation.
Maybe this helps, Dawn. I just want to, I'll read it exactly what it says here.
So as I'm just saying, if CFAC is supposed to make a recommendation, isn't council supposed to hear that recommendation at some point?
Let me read it.
Okay.
I don't want to interpret. I'm just going to read it. 2.1, page 184, the staff report, Chapter 2, council salary, benefits and reimbursements. Compensation for services rendered by the mayor and council members in an official capacity shall be provided in accordance with state law and with the Morro Bay Municipal Code. The Citizens Finance Advisory Committee will be asked every eight years, starting with 2019, to provide the council a recommendation on whether any changes should be made to that compensation period. That's what our policy says.
I'm just asking if that means that's coming in front of council?
Right now, that means that it's coming in front of council because it's the policy that exists. I'm suggesting, and I had concurrence in the motion that I made, that this be reviewed as part of this process to determine if this process should be changed or amended.
Maybe I can help. I think Councilmember Addis, it will not be coming back to council unless or until the advisory handbook board is amended to confirm or deny it. So if you want to add it as a council agenda item and get support, that's how it would come back before the advisory committee process.
I just caught it because I knew it was an issue that had been discussed, so that's why I brought it up. All right. All right, looks like we might be done here. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall located at 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. Good evening.[1740.33]